Okay Jake, did you let everyone in?
I'll be letting everyone in right now. I do temporarily have screen share disabled, so once we begin presentations, just say you're gonna start a share and I'll turn it back on.
Okay. So, this is Commissioner Sinemah, I'm gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order. If everyone could join me on the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, Kate, do we have any public input, any citizens input, sorry?
Um, Mr. Chair, I just received an email, if you want me to read it.
Is this the time for the, to do that? We've actually never had citizens in before, so.
I mean, I just got it. I just, I also emailed it out to you just now. It says, "To the Honorable Members of the Lake County Planning Commission from John Sullivan, Middletown Property Owner and Taxpayer for 22 Years." And he just says that he opposes the development of workforce housing at 2100. Yes.
Um, so is, are we, we're in the public comment period for general comments that aren't related to a particular item, correct?
Right. That's correct.
If this email is in relation to the Gwinocque project, that's an agenda item and that comment would be better read.
No, I don't have anything other than stuff about Gwinocque.
Okay. Perfect. Alright. So, um, our order of business today is Plan Development Project, AM 18-04, DA 18-01, GPAP 18-01, RZ 18-01, RZ 20-01, GPD 18-01, SD 18-01, SD 20-01, UP 18-49, and UP 20-02. The project applicant is Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated, proposing to designate the Gwinocque Valley site as resort commercial and rezone it to Gwinocque Valley District, GVD. The project locations are 22000 Butts Canyon Road, Middletown, and 21000 Santa Clara Road, Middletown, in the southeast corner of the intersection of Butts Canyon Road and Highway 29. Okay, staff?
Good morning, Commissioners, interested public staff. My name is Scott Villione, I'm the interim Director of the Community Development Department for Lake County, and it is my pleasure to introduce today's item. This morning, I have with me here in the, in the conference room, Takara Nicole Thomas, who is our Deputy Director of Community Development, and Mark Roberts, who is our Principal Planner. I also have Ann Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services, and Pete Montadelli, also with AES, who performed the EIR. We have also a couple of distinguished gentlemen joining us from Palfire, Captain Mike Wink, and, okay, Mr. Duncan. I wanted to note that we are here in the conference room. We've attempted to maintain as much separation as possible here this morning. Individuals who will be speaking to you will remove their masks for the purpose of sound quality, and everyone else who is in the, in the room with us will be wearing a mask. So, in case there are any concerns, we're, we're doing everything we can to comply with our COVID-19 precautions. What I've done for you this morning is, oh, I should also note, we have Kate Lewis in her office administering the meeting on our behalf, so, thank you Kate. I will let the staff from the developer introduce themselves when it comes time for their presentation, but I know that they are all on the line and, and so, in order to move things forward, I'll let them introduce themselves. I am going to, Jake, if you could allow me to share my screen, I've got a short PowerPoint presentation that will summarize today's meeting and get things started, so I will begin that.
Screen share has been enabled, you should be good to go.
Mr. Chairman, this is John.
Yeah, John.
I just wanted to disclose at the start of the meeting that I have made a site visit in the last couple of weeks and met with the team that is making the presentation today.
Okay, I actually had a site visit yesterday.
I've also had a site visit last week, it was great.
So I'm curious, can everyone see that screen that has the?
No.
Negative.
No.
There it is.
There it is.
Yep.
And this is why I have staff here with me this morning.
The youngest person in the room is the best bud.
That's right.
Yep. I've demonstrated my, the limit of my capabilities right there, so. Again, good morning, it's, it's my pleasure to make this introduction. This is a project that's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of work put into this, and I think this morning's presentation by both the consultant that prepared the EIR and the developer, you will see that no stone has been left unturned and a very thorough review and a very impressive amount of work's been done. So, with that, today's meeting, or today's agenda, we're going to do a short project background. We'll go over the requested county approvals and the project analysis that was performed by staff. AES will then prepare or present their environmental impact report analysis, followed by the applicant, who will also make a presentation, and then we will make our recommended conditions, and then you can deliberate and then open it up to public hearing. So again, we're going to discuss the project background, the county approvals, a bit of the Phase 1 project description. You will probably see this map again, so I apologize for duplicating, but this is just an overview of the Gwinocque Valley site. It also shows the Middletown Housing Site there on the left-hand part of the screen and the small parcel in Middletown off of Santa Clara. It should be noted that the hatched area within the large red boundary is not a part of, of this project. What we will be asking of the Planning Commission today is two sets of approvals. One is for the Gwinocque Valley Mixed Use Commercial Development, and the other will be for the Middletown Housing Development. These were covered under one Environmental Impact Report and one Environmental Analysis, however, they are considered two separate projects. So you will be making two sets of approvals. So, for the Gwinocque Valley Mixed Use Development, you will be making findings pursuant to CEQA and a zoning ordinance amendment that will create the Gwinocque Valley District, a general plan amendment to resort commercial, and approve a number of entitlements for Phase 1, including a general plan of development, a major use permit, specific plans of development, tentative subdivision maps, and a development agreement. For the Middletown Housing Site, the approvals that we will be requesting from you will be the rezone of approximately 3.5 acres from single-family residential to family residential, tentative subdivision map, and a major use for community clubhouse. Going back to the Gwinocque Valley project, the requested general plan amendment would redesignate the entire site to resort commercial, which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Middletown Area Plan, and amend the Langtree-Gwinocque Special Study Area Map of the Middletown Area Plan to include, that will include the common, the area commonly known as the college parcels. There are a number of subdivision, subdivision maps that are proposed. This is a summary of, of the subdivision lot counts based on the various components of the project, and I'm not gonna go through each and every one of those, but you can see the summary of, of the proposed subdivision lot count. Again, this is what we're gonna be asking you to do for the Middletown Housing Site, and this slide includes an overview of the project area. Again, it's a rezone of three and a half acres. The Middletown Offsite Workforce Housing will include a total of 221 bedrooms, consisting of 50, 50 lots of division and 21 single-family homes and 29 duplex four-bedroom units. And then, of course, I mentioned the major use permit for the community. What staff's process here is, we have evaluated the environmental impact report that was prepared by the consultant, and we evaluated that EIR against a number of our county documents, to include the Middletown Area Plan, the Lake County General Plan, and the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. And, uh, we believe, and we will be, that this project is consistent with, with all of those documents. So with that, I, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I will be turning over the presentation to Ryan Sawyer with AES, and we're gonna have a short little moment here while we switch screens, and so bear with us, and I'll turn this over to Ryan, and would you like to move to the hot seat and I'll?
Um, well?
Actually, they can see you, so.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm, if this is okay with everyone, I'm fine, just stay in foot. Um, let's see, I will share my screen here. Bear with us. Well, since I maximized that, I can't see the screen share. Alright. So can everyone see the first page of my presentation here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the introduction, Scott. Good morning, Planning Commissioners and members of the public. I'm Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. We are the environmental consultant that was selected to prepare the environmental impact report in compliance with CEQA for the proposed project. The following presentation will detail the purpose of an environmental impact report, provide an overview of the Gwinocque Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, and provide a summary of the analysis and key findings from the EIR. To start off with a bit of background, the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, requires that public agencies consider the effects of discretionary actions prior to making a decision. The EIR prepared for the proposed project is an informational document that's intended to inform decision-makers of environmental issues before making a decision, and it identifies potentially significant direct, indirect, and cumulative project-related impacts, and describes mitigation measures that will lessen those impacts. The CEQA review process for the proposed project was initiated with release of the Notice of Preparation on April 23, 2019. The NOP, which is the shorthand for Notice of Preparation, announced a 30-day scoping period that ran to May 23. The Notice of Availability of the Draft EIR was published on February 21 of this year, and that announced a 45-day comment period that was subsequently extended by the county for an additional two weeks to eventually close on April 21. The final EIR was published on the county's website on Friday as an attachment to the staff report, and it consists of three volumes, including a response to comments volume, which responds to all of the public comments that were received during the draft EIR review period, a revised version of the draft, so revisions that were made primarily in response to the comments that were received, and additional technical appendices, so revisions to technical appendices or supplemental appendices. In brief, the project requires approvals, so now I'm gonna just do a brief overview, and some of it will be a little repetitive from what Scott said, but, I just wanna go over a few extra things here. So the project requires approvals from Lake County and other responsible agencies that will allow the development of a mixed-use suburban residential community on the Gwinocque Valley Site, offsite workforce cohousing in Middletown, and an optional offsite water supply well pipeline that would extend from State Route 29 to the Gwinocque Valley Site. The Gwinocque Valley Site consists of approximately 16,000 acres, or 25 square miles, in southeast Lake County. It's located along Butts Canyon Road, both to the north and south of Butts Canyon Road, directly west of the Napa County Line. The Middletown Housing Site, which is the location of the proposed offsite workforce housing, consists of approximately 12.75 acres in central Middletown. And the offsite well consists of approximately 37 acres just east of Middletown and a pipeline alignment that would extend for six miles within Butts Canyon Road. This slide is the same that Scott just showed you, and it illustrates the location of the Gwinocque Valley Site in relation to the offsite water well and the workforce housing in Middletown. The key requested county approvals are listed on this slide, and they include an amendment to the general plan land use designation of the Gwinocque Valley Site from its current designations of agriculture, resource conservation, rural lands and rural residential to resort commercial. Also, requested general plan amendments include an amendment to the special study area of the Middletown Area Plan to include the area commonly known as college parcels in the southern portion of the Gwinocque Valley Site. Additional county approvals include a zoning ordinance amendment to introduce a new zoning district, and approval of entitlements for the workforce housing in Middletown. This slide illustrates the proposed zoning for the Gwinocque Valley Site, so as you can see, the entire site would be designated as Gwinocque Valley District. And the project also proposes approximately 1,700 acres of ag combining district areas, which are shown in the black crosshatch here, as well as approximately 2,765 acres of open space combining district, which is shown in the green. These other combining districts that are shown on the map are essentially continuation of the existing combining districts on the site. The Gwinocque Valley District would permit development of up to 850 hotel and resort residential units, 1,400 residential estates, 500 workforce cohousing bedrooms, resort amenities and accessory uses. The Gwinocque Valley District we developed over multiple phases, and at this time, detailed plans have only been developed for the first phase, which will be constructed over the next 10 years, and future phases will be built out based on market demands. Therefore, as a result of the extended timeline, the draft EIR provides a programmatic analysis of the impacts of full buildout of the Gwinocque Valley District and a project-level analysis for the impacts of the Phase 1 development. And development of future phases will be subject to additional CEQA review that would tier from the EIR that we prepared. Phase 1 of the Gwinocque Valley District would have a combined footprint of 1,450 acres, so the, you know, the physical footprint of the grading, that would include five hotels with a total of 127 hotel units and 141 resort residential units. It would also include 401 residential estate villas and 100 workforce cohousing bedroom units. Resort amenities would include an amphitheater, spa, equestrian areas, a new golf course, a camping area, and commercial and retail facilities. Phase 1 also includes agricultural production and support facilities, including two wineries, essential accessory facilities that are gonna include a backup house area, a temporary hotel for workforce referred to as the Entourage Hotel, and that will have 15 units, an emergency response and fire center, a float plane dock on Didier Reservoir, and two helipads for emergency response. It will also include supporting infrastructure, including solar energy production areas. This slide illustrates the site plan for Phase 1. The maroon areas here represent the resort parcels with the residential parcels shown in blue. The open space, we already discussed, it's the large green area and consists of the 2,700 acres. And then, I wanted to point out, the areas here in orange crosshatch are new and have been added since the draft EIR, and these include habitat connectivity easements that would essentially be left in open space to provide for wildlife migration corridors. Undeveloped areas within the site will include the open space combining district area consistent with the requirements in a 2009 EIR prepared for a water rights project on the ranch, the addition of the 400 acres of habitat connectivity easements that I just mentioned, approximately 1,700 acres of agricultural combining district areas, undeveloped areas within the residential lots that would occur as a result of a 1.5 acre development restriction in the Gwinocque Valley District Design Guidelines, as well as approximately 7,600 acres of dual-open space that would be provided between the resort clusters that's not proposed for development under Phase 1, although it should be noted that these areas could be subject to development under future phases. As required by the Gwinocque Valley District Design Guidelines, which are included in Appendix DG to the final EIR, site-wide lighting design will preserve nighttime dark skies in accordance with the Dark Sky Initiative adopted by the county in California Building Codes, and this will be accomplished by minimizing the use of lighting fixtures and where used, ensuring that all exterior lights are shielded and downcast. Four options for electrical power distribution are evaluated in the EIR, and they range from the provision of power by PG&E to the creation of a public utility district with electrical power distribution independent from PG&E. This would include the generation and storage of power for the project's energy needs. The project will include the installation of solar panels to, at a minimum, meet the demand of the proposed residential uses in accordance with California law, and would utilize renewable energy sources either through purchase or on-site generation to meet the demands of commercial and other uses. Site access will be provided through two entrances on Butts Canyon Road. The primary access would occur via a new roadway in an intersection, and we evaluate two options for that roadway within the EIR. One of them that is located at the McCain Canyon, approximately two and a half miles from the Langtree Winery entrance, and one that's located slightly closer to the Langtree Winery entrance. A secondary access point will be provided through improvements to an existing roadway. Going back to access here, I did wanna mention that both access intersections will include turning lanes, de-acceleration acceleration lanes as needed, and would include stop and yield signs. And additionally, warning signs will be installed on both sides of the intersection so that travelers are aware of the intersection. Given the remote location of the site, the applicant proposes to develop an independent water and wastewater system to serve the proposed development on the Gwinocque Valley Site. Sufficient offsite wa, excuse me, sufficient onsite water and wastewater capacity for Phase 1 and the anticipated future phases of the project has been demonstrated in the water supply assessment and the wastewater feasibility study that were included as appendices to the EIR. The new water wastewater system would either be owned and operated by a newly established private utility or be sold to and operated by an existing utility company or district. Potable water for the project would be provided via deep water supply wells, and non-potable water for irrigation, fire supply, and, and fire supply would be provided through either recycled water, surface water where allowable, and optionally through the offsite water supply well, although it should be noted that the water supply assessment did find that there are sufficient water supplies within the Gwinocque Valley Site to meet the needs of the project without the use of the offsite well. Wastewater treatment for resort clusters and nearby residential development would be provided through centralized wastewater treatment plants that would produce high-quality recycled water, and independent septic systems would be used for some of the more remote residential lots. Offsite components associated with the project may include electrical transmission line upgrades, although these would be limited to rewiring of existing poles and therefore, physical environmental effects are expected to be minimal, water supply infrastructure in the well, which we've discussed, access intersection improvements, which I went over in the previous slide, and the offsite workforce housing in Middletown. And the environmental effects of all of these offsite improvements are evaluated in the EIR. The offsite workforce housing will consist of 50 housing units, including the 21 single-family units and 29 duplex units, each with four bedrooms, and it will include a community center and open space along the creek. This slide illustrates the site plan for the Middletown Housing Site. As you can see here, the single-family units are surrounding the perimeter of the site with the duplexes located in the center. Rain gardens and stormwater detention and treatment areas will be provided within these green areas shown on the site plan to ensure no significant increase in stormwater runoff rates. So as I mentioned previously, Volume 1 of the final EIR is a response to comments, but Volume 2 I'm outlining here because it's, it's the heart of the environmental analysis. And this volume includes an introduction and essentially, you know, a summary of the EIR. Section 2 is a very detailed project description, and Section 3 goes over the environmental issue areas and the significance thresholds and impacts mitigation measures. Section 4 discusses essentially indirect and cumulative effects and other items that are required under CEQA. We also include an analysis of alternatives in accordance with CEQA, and then include references and bibliographic information. The resource areas that we studied within the EIR are listed on this slide, and I'll go over the key findings here on the following slides. This is a list of the, of some of the technical studies that were completed in support of the EIR and that were included as appendices to the EIR. These included multiple biological assessments and cultural resource surveys, traffic impact analyses and water resource studies, and key additions to the technical studies that were made following publication of the EIR outlined here. So, the Oak mitigation plan that was, has, was revised to increase oak woodland preservation ratios to require three acres of preservation for every acre of impacts to oak, excuse me, valley oak woodland, and then two acres of preservation for every acre of impacts to other oak woodlands versus the 1.5 to 1 mitigation ratio that we had in the draft EIR. So the mitigation ratios were increased. Additionally, revisions include the clarification that oak savanna is a subset of oak woodland, and we included increased monitoring requirements for mitigation plants, plantings. The wildfire response plan was revised to require the establishment of roadway fire breaks upon occupancy of structures versus leaving the timing of the fire breaks to the discretion of the homeowners association, and also to require primary structures be equipped with an exterior fire suppression system. An air transportation technical memo was provided to clarify information related to the operations of the float plane dock and helipads within the site in response to comments from Caltrans Aviation. And a new appendix Wildlife was added that evaluated wildlife movement corridors on the Gwinocque Valley Site that were identified in the Maya Comas-Tavarezza Connectivity Network Report. And as a result of this study, the 400 acres of habitat easements were added to the site plan. And we included a new transportation demand management plan in accordance with the mitigation measures recommended in the draft EIR to demonstrate reduced vehicle mile traveled impacts. impacts. So the key issues and mitigation measures recommended in the EIR, I will summarize in the following slides. I do want to note again, I'm not going to be summarizing all of the impacts and mitigation measures in the EIR, but just some of the key ones that we have heard from the public. And so if there's any questions about additional impacts, I'm happy to answer them, but here I'll just go through some of the key highlights. So with respect to aesthetics, the draft EIR found that the majority of the proposed Phase One development would not be visible from public vantage points. However, the site access option two at McCain Canyon would result in significant alteration to the topography in that area that would be considered significant and unavoidable. Additionally, because the location of future phases that could be developed under the Guanac Valley District has not been identified, the EIR identified aesthetic impacts from future phases to also be a significant and unavoidable effect to viewers traveling along Butts Canyon Road, which is a county-designated scenic corridor. And with the incorporation of the dark sky lighting strategies in the Guanac Valley District Design Guidelines, development of the Guanac Valley site would have a less-than-significant impact associated with lighting, and similar mitigation measures were recommended to be implemented at the Middletown Housing Site. Regarding agriculture, currently there are approximately 1,100 acres of agricultural zoning within the Guanac Valley site, and after the proposed zoning amendment, the project would preserve 1,743 acres and add preserve combining zoning district, which is an overall increase in agricultural zoning. The majority of the important farmland within the overall boundaries of the Guanac Ranch is actually located within the Guanac Valley and is under separate ownership and therefore not protected. But within the Guanac Valley site itself that was studied in the EIR, there are approximately 196 acres of important farmland, and 50 acres of this would be converted as a result of the Phase One development, with a potential for conversion of important farmland in future phases. Mitigation requires that conservation easements are established on ag land of equivalent quality for every, at a one-to-one ratio for every acre of agricultural land impacted. But because there would still be a net loss of important farmland, this was identified as a significant unavoidable effect within the EIR. The project would result in emissions of criteria air pollutants and greenhouse gases from construction and operation. Mitigation measures include construction best management practices, including dust control and the use of low emission Tier Four equipment, and operational measures, including energy efficiency and transportation demand management, such as cart pooling and shuttles. Because the Lake County air basin is an attainment for all criteria air pollutants, these measures would reduce the impacts associated with air quality to less than significant. However, the generation of greenhouse gas emissions would exceed thresholds associated with statewide greenhouse gas reduction targets, and therefore was also considered to be a significant and unavoidable impact within the EIR. The Guanac Valley site supports habitat for numerous special status wildlife and plant species, and the EIR requires extensive mitigation measures to protect these species during construction and operational activities. Measures include, but are not limited to, construction worker awareness training, pre-construction surveys, lighting measures, restricted construction times and fencing near sensitive habitats, habitat preservation, restrictions on perimeter fencing to allow wildlife movement, and a detailed oak mitigation plan. There are approximately 4,500 acres of oak woodlands within the Guanac Valley site, with up to 477 acres being impacted by the Phase One development. The oak mitigation plan requires that residential lot development is restricted to... Okay, should I continue?
Yes.
All right. So I'll start back with the key findings related to oak woodlands. So there are approximately 4,500 acres of oak woodlands within the Guanac Valley site, with 477 acres being potentially impacted by Phase One. The oak mitigation plan requires that residential lot development is restricted to a maximum of one acre of impacts to oaks per lot, and that valley oak woodland is preserved at a ratio of three to one, and other oaks are preserved at a ratio of two to one. It also requires that impacts to individual oaks are replanted at either a two to one or five to one ratio based on the diameter of breast height, with a success standard of 80%. So just to recap quickly, I'm going through the key findings in the EIR, and the next issue I wanted to address is cultural resources. So cultural resources surveys of the site have identified over 60 known historic and archaeological resources, some of which are also tribal cultural resources. Mitigation measures include avoidance of known resources and requires that the applicant retain a tribal cultural advisor, conduct construction worker awareness training, and prepare an unanticipated discoveries plan. Additionally, professional archaeologists and tribal monitors will conduct construction monitoring of initial ground disturbing activities. And since publication of the draft EIR and as a result of ongoing consultation with Middletown Rancheria regarding tribal cultural resources, the mitigation measures in the final have been further refined to emphasize the avoidance and minimization as mitigation options and to clarify procedures in the event of discovery of resources during construction. Key findings related to water resources, we summarize next. So the groundwater pump tests in the water supply assessment technical appendix found that there are sufficient water supplies within the Guanac Valley site to support the proposed development without adversely impacting surface and groundwater resources. Mitigation does require, though, that a safe yield pump test of the off-site well be conducted that demonstrates that there will be no drawdown of groundwater beyond 300 feet of the off-site well, and requires that quarterly groundwater monitoring be conducted for the first five years of use of that well to demonstrate that the performance criteria are being met and that there would be no impact to groundwater levels beyond 300 feet of the well. Additional mitigation measures related to water resources were recommended associated with stormwater pollution and floodplain mapping. Regarding noise, due to the distance of the site from noise-sensitive receptors, most noise impacts were determined to be less than significant. However, the EIR did identify potentially significant impacts associated with the use of the float plane dock and helipads, as well as the increase in traffic-related noise along Butts Canyon Road. Mitigation measures included reduction strategies during construction, including mufflers on equipment and other measures to reduce noise during construction activities. And it also, mitigation measures also restrict non-emergency aircraft and helicopter flight times to daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, depending upon the time of year, to reduce impacts associated with air traffic noise. And after mitigation, the increase, though, in traffic-related noise along Butts Canyon Road would still be considered significant and unavoidable. So that was a significant unavoidable effect identified in the EIR. Key findings related to traffic will be summarized next. The draft EIR traffic study identified potentially significant impacts associated with the level of service at several intersections, including near-term impacts to locations on State Route 29, and cumulative impacts to intersections outside of Lake County jurisdiction. The traffic study also found that the generation of vehicle miles traveled per capita would be above regional average, and it recommended thresholds, excuse me, and also above recommended thresholds developed by the state associated with greenhouse gas reduction targets. Mitigation measures include entering into an agreement with Caltrans for improvements to the SR29 intersections, including near-term mitigation at the Butts Canyon Road intersection. Mitigation also required that a traffic study and mitigation measures be developed for future phases of the project when they move forward, and it required the implementation of a transportation demand management program to reduce vehicle miles traveled, such as shuttle service from the workforce housing in Middletown and carpool programs. With respect to wildfire effects, the proposed project itself incorporates a number of design features that are outlined within the wildfire management plan, including strategic fire breaks along roadways and drainages, livestock grazing practices, and exterior sprinkler systems. With the measures outlined in the wildfire plan, the EIR found that the project would have less than significant impacts related to exacerbation of wildfire hazards. However, mitigation was recommended to address post-wildfire measures that should be implemented in the event of a fire to prevent landsides and flooding, which is one of the significance criteria that we look at under SEQA. So that concludes my presentation today. I will turn it back over to Scott, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, so up next is, let me take that off, thank you. Up next is a presentation by the consultant.
Or the applicant.
I'm sorry, the applicant, thank you. Rachel or Kirsty? It should be Rachel or Kirsty, are you...
They might be forced muted, so we have to, Jake, we have to unmute.
Yeah, let me, let me find them here. You said Rachel, or I do see a hand from Catherine Philipakis.
Yes.
And Kirsty Shelton.
Kirsty Shelton. I will move to unmute those two here. Thank you for raising your hands. Okay, you should have audio now.
Yes, thank you, I have audio. This is Catherine Philipakis. I don't have video, but that's fine, you don't need to see me, there's a photograph on screen. Good morning, Chair Sunrun, Honorable Commissioners and Members of the Community. My name is Catherine Philipakis. I'm an attorney with Rela Bron Martel in St. Helena, and I'm the project attorney. I'd like to thank staff and County Council's Office, and all of you in particular for your sent花this morning despite all of the upset that we experienced, and more importantly for the hard work that got us here today. It's my pleasure to introduce one of the development partners, one of the applicants, and visionary member of the project, Jonathan Breen. Jonathan, or JB as he's known to all of us, has decades of luxury hotel experience, and he is known in the industry as an innovator in high-end resort concepts. He has been business partners with Adrian Zeca, who is a famed hotel designer all around the world, for over 20 years as they developed a luxury brand known as Satie. So Jonathan is here to talk a bit about the design concepts of the project and some more of the details, so I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Can everyone hear me? Because I'm not quite sure if I'm unmuted yet.
You're fine.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name, as Kay said, is Jonathan Breen, and I am one of the development partners for the project. On behalf of my other development partners, Adrian Zeca, Chris Meredith, Kevin Case, and Nick Fung, we want to thank the Lake County staff and the community for the support and your time today. Adrian Zeca and I first looked at this project back in 2012, so as you can imagine, we are very grateful to be here today. In 2016, after years of searching, we were very fortunate to find a responsible owner with a commitment to long-term preservation and low-density development. Our vision has always been about preserving this beautiful land and undertaking a very low-density development that is actually in tune with the nature. When complete, the development square footage will use less than 10% of the total property. Once we acquired the property in 2016, we began immediately commissioning the best international architects and designers to work with us on the first thing was the overall master plan, and then the vision for each of the components of the project. The planning process started with our master planner, John Michel Gaffey from Denniston International, and our team then extensively hiking every part of the property. Being 16,000 acres, this was quite a feat. So over a year, we completed, and we then agreed on an overall master plan. The next step was bringing each of the various architects to the property and working with them on a location that appealed to them as a designer. These eventually became their respective community cluster areas. Right from the beginning, we utilized the Middletown Area Plan as our guide, and we hope that you were pleased with what we came up with. I thought it might be helpful today to mention the incredible designers and team members who are behind this project. The designs that you will see today are a result of a team of over 35 talented professionals, including Denniston, who completed the master plan, but they also designing the golf section with three clubhouses and various golf fillers, and are also working with Tom Doak, who was designing the actual golf course. Backham Gillam Architects, led by Howard Backham, has designed the Farm Village, which includes a hotel, a farm-to-table restaurant, grocery store, artist and a retail barns, a farmer's market, winery, and associated villas. FDG Architects, who consists of the Argentinian professional polo player Nacho Figueres, and a father-and-son team of Ignacio Ramos, have designed the Polo and Equestrian Center along with the Polo Villas. Ed Tuttle and Carey Hill Architects have both worked with Adrian Zeca for over 40 years and have designed for Adrian some of the best resorts around the world. Both are designing intimate boutique resorts with their own fillers. Tata Wando from Japan has designed a wonderful museum and art complex, and first design are handling the architecture coordination for many of these overseas architects. We have a very important and talented landscape team that includes Island Planning Corporation, SWA Group, and PCI Landscape Architects. Our civil engineers are Sherwood Design, who have greatly assisted the team in helping all of them with the civil design for obviously such a large-scale project. Since all the team members could not be here today, I would like to present, just after I finish, a short video so you could sort of see, hear each of them speak, and about the whole vision of the project. Thanks very much, I appreciate everything.
Jake, what would, are we muted?
No, you're, you have audio, we hear you.
So Jake, what would you suggest we do, especially in light of the earlier morning's unpleasantness?
I was able to give Rachel a telehost, and it looks like she was able to, um, to share her screen still, but she, we're having issues with the proper options still.
Okay, so I have it here on a flash drive, was that helpful? Because I think part of the problem was trying to stream it over Zoom yesterday as well, and it gets laggy.
I'm being told that they're gonna work on it here.
Okay.
I think it's probably Jake.
It's Kate.
Oh, she's peaking you? Okay.
Would you like it? How are you on, Steve?
I'm very, very concerned about intruding into nature. I don't want to disturb it. I love nature. It's the biggest piece of land that I've ever had a chance to work with, and to find one that is so beautiful, because it is in wine country, with the lakes, with the topography that it has, that this land that is so fantastic, put into a responsible owner that we were able to find to buy it. That is very rare and unusual.
I don't think I've ever seen anything so beautiful. The goal of the project is to create something...
The goal of the project is to create something that we don't affect the land. And at the end of the day, the beauty of the land is still the essence of the project. That has always been the mantra from, from the beginning.
And let me tell you, and I've been around the world many times, I know when I, when I see a site, it hits you, it doesn't, this is not something intellectual, you can't, that's it.
I started getting calls from people with environmental interests because my work seemed different than everybody else. The less it looks like a golf course, the better. This project, so much bigger and such a longer-term vision than most of the things that I've worked on, they just keep coming up with more interesting pieces, like the equestrian facility.
I really believe that there's gonna be a before and after in, in my life of this project, because this is a project where someone gives you a white canvas and allows you to dream, and that doesn't happen too often. Then here, the idea was, okay, let's bring this equestrian lifestyle to life and just dream, you know? There's no limitations to it, except taking care of the environment and not interfering with that, right? It is an honor, right, to be able to work with someone like Adrian, someone that has given people beautiful experiences, and being able to work with someone like him is, it's a dream come true, it's an honor. I just can't wait for this whole thing to, to happen.
We'll never again get to do a project like that. Buildings are buildings, but nature is fantastic.
Kirsty, I do see you being unmuted, and I do see you talking, but I cannot hear you. Yeah, my, it doesn't look like your, your audio is being picked up there.
Now, can you hear me?
Now, can you hear me? Now, can you hear me?
There is an echo.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, it's great to hear from JB, it's great to see the video. My name is Kirsty Shelton. Uh, good morning Chair, Sunroom, Members of the Commission, and Members of the public. Thank you for your patience as we navigate this new way of presenting. Uh, for tho, those of you who I haven't met, I'm the Planning and Entitlement Manager for the Maha Project at Guanac. Um, I've been working with the design team, the county, the community, the investors for over three years. And I'd like to, it is my utmost pleasure to introduce Randy Sternberg. Randy has been on the property for thirty-nine years. He is the Vice President of Lotus Land Development, and it is my pleasure to introduce Randy.
I think Randy's muted.
Uh, Randy Sternberg, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, should be able to see me and hear me, right?
Yep.
Well, thank you Kirsty, and good morning to everybody. A quite an exciting morning so far. They asked me to do the history section, and I, and I asked them why they wanted me to do the history section, and they promised me that it wasn't because I was old, so. I'm gonna go with that.
I resemble that.
Yeah. So, the, the ranch is loaded with history, and it started from the native, when the Native Americans were here thousands of years ago. And we moved from that to, um, the homesteaders that came in, the Homestead Act was in eighteen sixty-two, and the Lake County portion of our property had close to thirty homesteads on it. So, you know, there's remnants of that, uh, out there, and it's exciting. Uh, we've recently been doing the work and, um, kind of plotting where these guys were, and it's, uh, it's kind of neat to see it. Um, so then I went from that to, in eighteen eighty-eight, Lily Langtree showed up and, you know, bought a piece of the property that was close to five thousand acres and kind of the Guanac Valley floor. And she, um, uh, and her friend Freddie Gibhardt, they, he bought some adjoining property, which was called the McCurry Ranch, which is part of the property now. And they started a horse thing, um, and had a little racetrack down by our hunting lodge, which is where we're putting our equestrian center. So, um, kind of following suit with, uh, with that. And then, um, as we went from that to nineteen fifty-five, my great uncle moved here from Nebraska and started as ranch manager on the property. And we used to come out and visit, so I, uh, that was kind of my first exposure to Guanac Ranch was when I was just a kid growing up. And then, um, nineteen eighty-one, thirty-nine years ago, um, I came and became ranch manager when my uncle retired. So, we've seen, between my, my uncle and myself, uh, uh, an awful lot of change. It was all cows when, when he came, and he actually was the first one to start planting a few vineyards, uh, kind of on the, on the Guanac Valley floor in the late seventies, uh, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. And then, when I came in nineteen eighty-one, they were just building a winery. And, um, so that winery has been, you know, in production all these years, and it just seems like time went by really fast. So, we built, um, Earl was in on building some dams, I'll talk about that a little bit later when we get into the water stuff. And, and then I did also, so. The, the projects that have come and gone through the property are nothing like what this project is. And there's just, uh, I, you know, words don't say how much fun it is to work with Adrian and Jonathan and the entire crew, you know, on this project. It's just, it's just been absolutely amazing. And to see the love they have of the, of the landscape and the nature is just over the top. So, um, it's, it's just been a blast. So I think Kirsty, are you running the slides? Oh, you're on grazing right now. So, um, the grazing started two hundred years ago when the missions came up from Mexico, the Spanish missions. And the furthest north mission was Sonoma, I believe. And they went north and came into our area. So, that was cattle. And then, in the eighteen sixties, the homestead came in, and they had, you know, mostly sheep and cattle, there was some talk about goats, but we really have never been able to find any concrete evidence that there was any, uh, you know, kind of significant goat, um, farming, but lots of cattle, lots of sheep. And then when Lily Langtree came, she had cattle and cowboys, um, the, the whole thing. And then, of course, um, Dieter, um, came in the late nineteen twenties, and he, William Dieter was really the one that started to put the ranch together as we see it today, both Lake and Napa County. He bought a lot of the homestead property, uh, and just started stitching, stitching it all together. So, um, and of course, he grazed, and then in nineteen fifty-five, when my uncle came, it was cattle operation, and that cattle operation really continues on today. And we still have cows here, um, and we'll continue to do that with our, with our new project. So, our new project, we can, we have three species that we've picked out, and of course, it's all about fire control, so it'll be cows and sheep and goats. Okay, existing water systems. So, um, Dieter built really the first big reservoir on the property, and anybody that's been down Buzz Canyon Road knows where that is. Uh, it's right on the south side of Buzz Canyon Road, along the white fence that we have out there now. And, uh, he then set up a complete irrigation system all through the valley floor. And it was concrete pipe that they routed together and probably dug the trenches by hand, most of them, uh, instead of having, um, air vents that we see today in our PVC applications. It was a, what we call the stand pipe, which was just a piece of concrete pipe sticking in the air, and went to, went to, uh, atmosphere, which allowed pressure differences to go up and down. And the most asked question, I, I have given a lot of tours, and some of them to the members of the Commission here, and, uh, the most asked question when we drive around the property is, you know, why is that big piece of concrete pipe sticking straight up in the air? And that's kind of the remnants of William Dieter's irrigation system. So then, in the fifties, when my uncle was here, ET Foley owned the property. He was a big contractor, um, from this area, and Santa Barbara was where he started. Um, they built Foley One and Foley Two, um, which were two more lakes in the valley. They increased the capacity of McCurry, and, um, uh, then the next group was Magoon Estate Limited, who I worked for, and they built Upper Bone Lake and improved Lower Bone Lake. And then when I came, um, in nineteen eighty-one, we built a small cross pond in Napa County, and then also Langtree Lake, which is on the map. So, the irrigation system started with William, uh, Dieter, and has just nonstop progressed as we've gone along. So, the, within, now we have seven state jurisdictional dams with, you know, roughly ten thousand acre feet of water. And for those of you that are not familiar with acre feet, that would be three point three billion gallons of water that we, uh, have, uh, water rights for through the Department of Water Resources. So, um, it's, that's, that's one of the biggest assets we have. Okay, we got another slide, existing surface water rights. So about ten years ago, Orville Magoon and I started the process of expanding the place of use for, so that we could increase, uh, vineyard, uh, planting. So, every crop has a little different allocation that you can use the water. So, uh, irrigated pastures, three point seven or something acre feet per acre, and vineyards about half that. So in order for us to continue to use the same amount of water, we needed to increase the acreage of our place of use. So, that whole process started, um, roughly around, um, two thousand and ten or so, and that got all completed two thousand, two, uh, twelve, thirteen. So, then, what you see there was the new place of use that, that was created by that new water right application. And, um, we're on vineyard operations, so you can kind of see that. There was twenty-eight hundred acres of proposed place of use in Lake County. That's the light green that you see on your, uh, screen. And then the darker green is, um, potential vineyard, and then the hashed green is the vineyards that are out there now. So you can see that we have a lot of area that we can irrigate with surface water for our project, and then, of course, it goes to the vineyard too. But bottom line, we have a lot of appropriated water, and it's being put to beneficial use now.
I'll just go to the next, just go to the next.
And we, we will be able to continue with that. So that's about it, I, I think we're done, and Kirsty's taking the next slide here.
Is that great? Can you hear me?
I guess.
All right, so now I'll begin diving into the project description, and I want to pause here because for the most part, the following slides will focus on what we call Phase One, the Specific Plan Development, which includes project-level EIR analysis. Our Phase One includes our forecast of development for the next ten years, and will be referred to as our project unless otherwise identified. Should be noted that the General Plan of Development, the Rezone, future phases, or you could consider the Fifty-Year Plan, will require additional environmental review, such as another EIR in the future. Within the sixteen thousand acre boundary, our project's footprint is less than ten percent of the ranch, or one thousand four hundred and fifteen acres. As Randy just described, the ranch has previous entitlements that allow for extensive vineyard development on-site. Our project will displace approximately four hundred acres of planted or previously approved vineyards. In addition, there are two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five acres of designated open space. This was required as part of the two thousand and nine water rights EIR mitigation, and includes the mitigation for the four hundred acres described above that our project displaces. In the forthcoming slides, you'll be introduced to the four hundred and twenty-five acre habitat connectivity easement. This is something we have recently added in response to the public comments received in the draft EIR. Please note, these easements are in addition to the designated open space, providing a total of almost three thousand two hundred acres in long-term preservation. In the next slide, you'll be introduced to the Oakwoodland Preservation, which has been enlarged, from one thousand six hundred and fifty to one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five acres since our last presentation to the Commission. This is in response to some of the public comments received in the draft EIR. As you saw on the previous presentations, and again on the forthcoming slides, we are offering two combining districts within the new Guanac Valley District. The Agricultural Preserve Combining District totaling one thousand seven hundred acres, and the Open Space Combining District we just described. Finally, the majority of the site is rural landscape. This is what we call the area in-between, and will be left as functionally preserved open space. This, this area has been pre-selected for agriculture, resort, commercial development through the special study previously approved in the Middletown Area Plan adopted almost ten years ago. As you can see on this map, the majority of the ranch within the Middletown Area Plan Special Study Number Three. The Middletown Area Plan was a public process that formalized the goals and vision of the future growth of Southern Lake County. The property owner purchased this property to invest in this visionary plan and looks forward to being part of the realization. The goals of the area plan focus on revitalizing the historic resort development and cur, commercial uses as the primary use, and to grow the high-quality agritourism concept as identified in the Middletown Area Plan. These renderings are what the Maha Farm Community Village will look like. As you can see, the vision is grounded in the agritourism concept identified in the Middletown Area Plan, most specifically focusing on the agricultural bounty that Lake County has to offer, while introducing an experience of the art of harvesting from the land. The Middletown Area Plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance for the Guanac Valley District. To ensure the continued importance and reliance on the historic agricultural uses on the property and within Lake County, the emphasis on agriculture was preserved within the proposed zoning district. As discussed, to protect the agriculture, we created the Agricultural Preserve Combining District to ensure the long-term preservation of onsite agricultural development. to ensure the long-term preservation of onsite agricultural development. Most importantly, the resort concept is rooted in the local cultural heritage in combination with the true farm-to-table concept. The concepts identified in the Middletown Area Plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance. This slide shows the existing zoning. Please note, the combining districts remain unchanged. As discussed, this is a slide of the proposed Guanac Valley District. One of the goals of the Middletown Area Plan was for it to be rezoned to a planned development district combining agriculture, commercial, and residential uses. Currently, the Lake County zoning ordinance does not have a mixed resort and residential zoning. Therefore, we are requesting to be rezoned, the Guanac Valley District, to provide the unique blend of commercial, hotel, and residential uses balanced with the primary agriculture and open space. This is where our proposal diverts into two important areas to distinguish. As already noticed, any additional requests beyond our first phase will require another specific plan application and further environmental review. I'd like to point out on this slide that the two additional proposed combining districts, the designated open space and agricultural overlays, will preclude resort development. One of the goals of this project is to maintain the designation of a boutique hotel, which requires 50 hotel rooms or less. This is achieved by having a Keystone Boutique Hotel as the flagship of five separate primary resort communities. These resort communities, which we'll go into detail on the next slide, typically have a boutique hotel surrounded by resort residential, which are small cottages for family to rent for longer stays, which results in a total of 288 hotel units within the project. Typically, the resort communities are surrounded by low-density residential for sale parcels, which I'll explain on the next slide. Low-density residential is another primary goal of this project. It is easy to misconceive the development of this project because of the scale. As you can see, the development impact ratio is minor. This graphic was produced by tracing the typical rooftop and roadway. The total number of residential estates is 401. Our footprint is .2 units per acre, or two units per 10 acres. Here is an example of a typical lot. This example lot we refer to as the slice of pizza. It's six and a half acres with a development footprint of one and a half acres, which results in five acres of functionally preserved open space. For reference, this five acres of potentially preserved open space is not included in the designated open space or habitat easement calculations. This low-density concept within preserved open space is a key element of the project's objectives and financial viability. Now I will hand over the presentation to Courtney Bauer to discuss the architectural elements in various resort communities. Courtney is an architect and principal of Burst Design. His work is grounded in active social, environmental, and economic issues while aesthetically exploring the ideas of beauty, sustainability, cultural convention, and place. Courtney?
Uh, Courtney, I do see that you're unmuted and I see you talking, but I'm not getting audio. Will you just turn, uh, toggle the mute again? Uh, and then one more. Looks like it's muted right now. Okay. Now check. Oh, I still can't hear you.
Courtney, you might want to check if your mic is on. In the interest of the video, shall I just keep going and then Courtney, you can chime in when you're on?
Uh, that was a thumbs up from Courtney.
Okay. So, um, the first community we'd like to describe today is the Equestrian Polo Center. It is designed by the Figueres Design Group, based out of Argentina. The cluster is focused on equestrian activities and is highlighted by two recreational polo fields. The main commercial area includes three buildings, which includes a clubhouse, stables, and a pony camp. These three buildings are organized on the site by a water element and will blend the buildings integrated into the site with a planted berm and green roofs, implying an extension of the landscape. These bermed areas at the clubhouse will also act as viewing platforms for the polo fields. Adjacent to the main commercial center, there is a small lodge surrounded by resort cottages and then peripheral villas. The Figueres Design Group architecture draws inspiration from the site by incorporating site materials, adapting to and paying reverence to the existing site conditions to enhance the user's accessibility and appreciation of the site. You can see that by the stone walls and the soft green roofs and the long horizontal lines. The top picture on the right is a slide shows a typical residential villa. Which at the end of the presentation, we will show you a short video of the villas and how they're integrated into the landscape. The second community we'd like to describe is Bone Ridge. It is designed by Ed Title Design Realization, who resides in Terrace, but is a Northern Californian native. Ed Title's architecture includes a unique circular hotel and restaurant that is punctuated by terrace green roofs. An exterior terrace and pathway along a prominent ridgeline offers a breathtaking experience. The single-level resort residential cottages flank the circular hotel, and then is surrounded by low-density residential villas. Honoring the vast beauty of Bone Ridge and its panoramic views, this architectural cluster adopts the simplicity of barn architecture and shapes, volume, and intermingled juxtaposition between indoor and outdoor living spaces. Building footprints are scaled according to the existing geological footprint, minimizing the built form in respect to the site. Low-lying residential resort structures with pitched roofs, planted roofs, and stone paved terraces will complement. Next, we have Maha Farms, which is designed by Howard Backen, a Backen-Gillen architect, a local architect based out of Santa Elena. This is the largest community in the project and the village, or the heart. This cluster includes a winery, a sales center at the Hilltop Hotel, the village, and surrounding resort cottages and residential villas. Courtney, can you hear me? Yeah.
Ah, okay.
It works.
Um, I can start if you'd like.
Um, sure. Uh, we're at, um, the winery is a small boutique winery offering wine cases and production from the surrounding vineyards.
Yeah. Um, above the village is the Hilltop Hotel, which consists of eight individual bungalows and an open pavilion, as well as a location to entertain sales and marketing. Um, the village includes a community clubhouse, 12 acres of market garden to serve the true farm-to-table restaurant, an outdoors farmer's, farmer's market covered pavilion, a cafe, artisan barns to include animal husbandry, and an apothecary, a post office, location for wine tastings, and an area for families to play bocce. The Maha Farm Village is centered around recreational activities with the Upper Bone Lake and Lagoon to provide paddle boarding and canoeing opportunities. This is the most dense part of the project and the closest to the main entry road for public and private guests to access. Um, next, we've got the Denniston Golf Estates Community. Um, they are located in the northern portion of the site. Uh, this area is designed by Denniston International and previously has been referred to in some of the documents as Red Hill Estates. This community area is designed around the golf course and also offers a lodge and amenities. Guests arrive at the resort facility at a lower level and are introduced to the landscape, which they will traverse in a curated path to the main lodge, extending their time and ultimately their appreciation of the surroundings. Amenities such as a lodge, a bar, dining room, library, and a retail boutique occur under one roof at the main lodge. Derived from the local Native American dwellings, the round forms allow for maximum views from its circumference and takes advantage of the resulting interior courtyard, offering prime location for special dinners and events. Next slide. Throughout the community villas, um, throughout the community villas are placed in various landscapes, including agricultural wooded and sloped. Denniston utilizes green roofs as well as simple pitched roofs, recalling the agricultural vernacular around the site. Uh, the golf course is up next. As you will recall from the introductory video, the golf course has been designed by Tom Doak of Renaissance Golf. Historically, his course design has been consistently praised for its minimalist ethos and for representing the natural contours and vegetation present on site. That's what makes them different from each other and from what other golf courses are like. The sensitivity of the site at Guanac Valley and our client's goals for the project present a chance to take the design to another level and to present a golf course which barely looks like a golf course at all. To assist in the sustainable course design, Tom has walked the site repeatedly and in the initial stages, spent time with a biologist walking the course to determine where the most mindful locations would be for its siting. The non-returning, the non-returning course is unique in its configuration and minimal in its site impact. By stretching out the route over two miles, it becomes a thin ribbon through the landscape, only recognizable as a golf course and not a lawn from perspective golfers. The course is served by three clubhouses at the first, the halfway, and the 18th holes. These are designed by Denniston and provide consistency with the other architecture in the cluster. The golf course is one of the many examples of how the land dictates, dictates the design. The resort at 12 Flats Community is designed by Kerry Hill Architects. It is, in its essence, minimalist, a minimalist complex designed in harmony with the natural topography. The commercial components include an entry and service pavilion and a resort center with a pool and hotel easement. This is a modest architecture inspiring the user's understanding of the sense of place, achieved with low, thin roof lines, green roofs to obscure the views of the structures. A cluster of single-story pavilions along the ridgeline will overlook vineyards on the property, inspired by the concept of a low-impact echo lodge. The plan positions each building according to existing contours to minimize disturbance to the terrain. Combining stone plinth, rammed earth walls, and high ceilings, they extend the feeling of openness and transparency from the exterior landscape into the interior. This site is detailed then by outdoor spaces, a lounge veranda, and the dining terrace overlooking a reflecting pond. The Spa Community is unique as it is, as it is the smallest community in the cluster. And its programming is focused on the spa and wellness facility and a living surrounding villas. It does not include a hotel component. The facility is located on a plateau in the land and capitalizes on landforms capturing surrounding views. The celebration of the cultural heritage, which inspired the veranda and the courtyard, also informs the design of the spa. The sense of interior and exterior spaces blend into one integrated, integrated space, replacing the traditional concept of the architecture typically defined by a singular space. The spa was designed to embrace both interior and exterior again. Tented Camp? Uh, so Tented Camp, um, is located all the way at the top of the property and, um, along Puda Creek, and it's designed by Jan Cortland. And the property will feature an escape within the most remote area of the, of the property. Surrounded by the beautiful Lake County rolling hills and streams, the project includes a request for a series of tented camp sites and limited accessory structures. This area will offer a seasonal opportunity for a limited number of guests. In keeping with Jan's heritage on safari in Tanzania, the experience in the tented area will focus on viewing and respecting the natural surroundings. That's all of the resort communities. I apologize for my technical difficulties. I did want to just say thank you to everyone, um, and mention that Burst Design has a longstanding relationship with Lotus Land and is very proud to be representing the world-renowned designers shaping this unparalleled project.
Great. This exhibit shows all of the, thank you Courtney. This exhibit shows all of the accessory to resort uses as designed as part of this specific plan and Phase One project. On the left side of the sheet, you will see the two renderings of the back of house operations and fire station. On-site workforce housing located on the pork chop. Looking parcel on the west side of Bus Canyon includes 100 units. A strategically-placed emergency response center, which includes a fire station, emergency medical staff, and a helipad dedicated for emergency purposes. For guests choosing to arrive via float plane or helicopter, there is a welcome kiosk and arrival center conveniently accessed directly from Bus Canyon Road. The various hotel clusters will be supported by multiple facilities shown within these red areas, such as water and wastewater treatment facilities, alternative energy production, and various housekeeping or support facilities. This slide shows our onsite accessory uses, including the fire station and the central back of house operations. Both of these areas are designed by Courtney, who you just heard from Burst Design, and includes a modern agricultural design aesthetic. An offsite workforce housing location is proposed as an option within the EIR. This site is located within the boundaries of Middletown and would allow employees and their families to reside within the community instead of being housed on-site. The site will include a small park, a small community center with a gym and pool. The property will be served by the Caliomi Water District and the Lake County Sanitary Sewer and request a higher density to allow duplexes in the middle within the inner portion of the property and maintains a single-family residential zoning on the exterior of the property. This proposal yields a total of 36 lots with 50 housing units. As previously discussed, the EIR analyzed the potential of the well and pipeline. However, I'd like to know that it remains an option as there's no current applications or request for an entitlement. The request for non-hottable backup water source is to secure adequate financing. Now I will give the presentation to Joe Runko. He's a principal and landscape architect with SWA Group, based in Sausalito since 1991. His work has focused on large-scale projects that balance development with the unique ecological and cultural aspects of the land with an emphasis on sustainable and resilient landscape.
Uh, can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. All right. Uh, good morning, everybody. This is really, uh, great, uh, great to be here and beyond our rough, rough start this morning. The, uh, I just want to say it's a real privilege to work with this site, with this team, with an owner, with this kind of vision. I've worked on many, many projects in Northern California over the last few decades, and this is clearly one of the, one of, it's the, not, not one of it, it's the most special one, I gotta say, I've ever had the privilege of working on. Um, what I'd like to just quickly describe, you know, the landscape, the site is so diverse and so, uh, uh, has these very, very different areas, uh, throughout the place that we really came up with a plan to try to understand and to build on the, the special character of the place. Uh, we've divided the site into, kind of loosely, into eight zones, which each have kind of a predominant character. I mean, they're not distinctly different, but there, because there is overlap. But the idea is to have any, uh, improvements, any new landscaping, any restoration, fit within and be consistent with and reinforce that existing character. Um, this kind of allows us to continue what we describe as kind of a light touch on the land so that we're really building on what's already there and not, uh, trying to do something completely different and new. Uh, we rely heavily on native and well-adapted plant materials in all of the, all of the plant lists. And I want to mention that, you know, one thing that's really unique here is that the, uh, development team, ownership group, is establishing, and other landscape architects are establishing, a very large, uh, native plant nursery, which will supplies trees, shrubs, grasses, bulbs, wildflowers, uh, over a very long period of time for the site, many of which are actually gathered seeds and propagated right there from the site itself. Um, the, uh, desert, you can jump to the designated open space, which I think Karik, uh, Kirsty, and others have mentioned before. This designated open space is a corridor that was originally, uh, established uh, in the 2009 Water Rights EIR that was, um, described earlier. Uh, and it remains in the same general location, though has been adjusted and expanded somewhat as part of the development. Um, this will result in a long-term preservation of, uh, 2,765 acres as currently, uh, uh, designed, and it will be, um, this is in addition to or in conjunction with the wildlife corridors that I'll mention in a minute to, uh, to extend the open space, uh, throughout the site. This will be implemented kind of alongside, uh, development as development happens. The connectivity easements, which were identified, that Ryan talked about earlier, are really a, an addition, uh, that additional, uh, uh, easements established to, uh, consistent with the My Comas de Berriessa, uh, M2B, uh, report that established kind of major connectivity, wildlife connectivity networks. networks. So these easements actually have been added to and established to ensure that connectivity that was set in the M2B report. So it really, and wherever it connects to the designated open space, you just get this vast network of open space that's intended to really ensure the connectivity of these critical corridors and habitats that exist on the site today. The area, the rural landscapes, what we describe as rural landscapes, is really, I mean, I think Kirsty called it something slightly different. It's not really the leftover portions, it's really the, just exactly what it says, continue to be ranched, it's open space, it is not currently planned for any development, and it will primarily be for either natural open space or grazing, as described by Randy in his earlier. The grazing management, which as Randy pointed out, is an important part of this, the long-term kind of fire protection and landscape management for the site. Throughout the site, you know, the wetlands, the waterways, the lakes are a really important part of not just the character, but the function, the kind of ecological function of this site. The planning has taken extensive efforts to avoid impacts, to restore and improve the riparian and wetland conditions, and, and I have to say that this kind of approach will really benefit the overall water quality and aquatic resources for the site, which we treat as a very important aspect of what's special here. At this point, I'd like to introduce Cody Anderson. We'll discuss this approach to sustainable infrastructure and site development. He's a principal at Sherwood Design Engineers in San Francisco. He's a native to North Bay, to the North Bay with extensive experience in bringing his engineering and firm's engineering rigor in a very light-touch approach to plan development.
Good morning, everybody. Are we, are we live? Yeah, great. Thank you. I'll briefly go through a few of the site infrastructure elements. Before I start, I just want to echo the sentiments Joe mentioned and Adrian mentioned in the video. It really is a lifetime opportunity and the opportunity to really do things well, do things correctly. So as somebody who's local to these landscapes, it's a pretty thrilling chance to work in this area. So I'm going to start off talking about roads. The ranch currently has approximately 72 miles of existing, well-developed and well-maintained agricultural roads. As you can see in the exhibit that's up now, the majority of the proposed roads utilize the existing network of ranch roads with necessary improvements to bring them into compliance with county and CAL FIRE design codes. The green roads in this exhibit are the existing roads that will be improved when the first phase. The orange roads represent existing roads to be located, meaning that they're going to be adjusted to avoid sensitive cultural or biological zones or to meet the necessary geometries of current code. And then lastly, the yellow roads are the new proposed roads needed to complete the overall road network. All the roadways will be improved and constructed to accommodate two-way traffic lanes with 50 feet minimum of defensible space on either side, consistent with CAL FIRE code. And in an effort to really have a light touch on the land, we've done extensive modeling, 3D modeling of the road network in collaboration with the design team and the landscape team to really get the right fit. Utilizing speed limits and traffic calming techniques across the site in order to ensure safety and shared access on all the private lands within the Guanaco Valley District will be implemented as well. Moving on, typical existing conditions on the site, like I mentioned earlier, the existing ranch roads are very well-developed on-site and they're consistent with what you find with agricultural roads. Drive-through creek crossings are not uncommon, and a typical example of that is shown in the photograph on screen. Next slide, you'll see a rendering of a proposed crossing. Of course, in actuality, it'll look better than that, but rendering illustrates that many of these drive-through crossings, we have the ability to eliminate the direct interface between vehicles and waterways, instructing new bridges, culvert crossings in full compliance with the county, Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the State Water Resources Control Board. All of these improvements, roads and otherwise, will meet current stormwater requirements, minimize disturbance to landform as much as is feasible, minimize impacts to hydrology, in many cases, the opportunity to improve hydrological impacts, and minimize impact to local ecology, all contributing to improvements in water quality. My last slide here is on overall infrastructure. So the existing infrastructure is, serves the agricultural demands, and the project requires new ground-up utility infrastructure network to serve both the commercial and the residential developments. That includes new power, electrical power distribution system installed underground along with data networks. That undergrounding provides resilience against wind and wildfire threats, and that's in exceedance of the minimum code requirements and a choice by the project. In addition, the project proposes to generate on-site renewable electrical energy with both rooftop and ground-mounted solar systems. The potable water system will be provided by, fed by on-site wells with treatment, storage, and distribution, new treatment, storage, and distribution facilities. Wastewater generated from the project will be collected and treated on-site to tertiary standards and redistributed in a recycled water network to offset landscape and potable water demands, significantly reducing the demand on the wells. Where necessary, propane tanks will be stored underground rather than above ground. And lastly, there's an on-site composting facility to serve both the native plant nursery and agricultural operations. Next section is community benefits, and I will turn it back over to Kirsty Shilton. Thank you.
Great, thanks Cody. You're great to work with. Well, it looks like we're going to make it. We're almost done, so happy to say that we were able to make this happen. Everyone in California is very interested in wildfire. So we put a lot of time and energy over the past two years and came up with this wildfire management plan. A variety of strategies and actions will be utilized to reduce fire risk throughout the property. Strategies such as grazing, vegetation removal, and irrigation will be used throughout the site's common residential and commercial landscapes to reduce fire risk. Three of the largest project commitments above code that reduce fire risk include the underground of utilities, the requirement for residential and commercial structures within the Guanaco Valley District to utilize exterior fire suppression systems in addition to interior, and the maintenance of vegetation along roadways to create a continuous fire break for safe egress through the entire property. These commitments are all above code and CAL FIRE requirements and are a huge commitment the project, for the project to offer. As you can imagine, the biggest community benefit is the number of employment opportunities. The project proposes an education center to provide job skills within diverse categories. These future employment opportunities include agriculture, administration, construction, equestrian, golf, maintenance, resort, winery, restaurant, and spa and wellness. In addition to the farmer's market and the cultivation of locally grown food, there will be retail opportunities for local artisans and farmers. In conclusion, for the most part, our presentation today and the specific plan of development focused on the designs for the commercial, hotel, and resort residential uses. We thought it would be helpful for the commission and the public to see an example of a residential villa. The Figueroa Design Group from Argentina digitally inserted the design plans and transposed them into the existing landscape. Please enjoy this video and see what the project could look like in five years.
Kirsty, is that to complete your presentation?
It does. Sorry, we had computer problems. Thank you, everybody. We are, our entire team is available to answer any questions.
So commissioners, we're closing in on the end of our staff presentation. Like to thank everyone, Ryan and her group for their presentations, and of course Kirsty and everyone with the developer got off to a rough start, but I think things are going well. I think to conclude, we'd like to go over what our recommendation is, or actually what we are asking for the planning commission to do. And basically what you're going to be doing today, or in your deliberation here, is you're going to be deciding whether you want to recommend to the board of supervisors related to the Guanaco Valley site, the certification of the final environmental impact report, EIR 1801, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, findings, and statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the water supply assessment. You're going to be approving the Guanaco Valley General Plan Amendment, GP 18-01. Again, you'll be recommending approval of the Guanaco Valley zoning amendment to adopt a new zoning ordinance district, AM 18-04. Recommending approval of the Guanaco Valley Rezone, RZ 18-01. Recommending approval of the Guanaco Valley General Plan of Development, GPD 18-01. Recommending approval of the Guanaco Valley Specific Plan of Develop Major Use Permit, UP 18-49, subject to the conditions of approval presented in Exhibit 15 of the staff report. You'll be recommending approval of the Guanaco Valley tentative subdivision maps for Phase One, that's SD 18-01, subject to the conditions of approval presented again in Exhibit 15 of the staff report. And you'll be recommending approval of the Development Agreement, DA 18-01. Furthermore, for the off-site workforce housing element of this project, you will be recommending approval of the rezoning of the interior portion of the Santa Clara site from single-family residential R1 to two-family residential R2 in Rezone, RZ 20-01. You'll be recommending approval of the tentative subdivision map for the Santa Clara site, SD 20-01, subject to the conditions of approval presented in Exhibit 15 of the staff report. And finally, you'll be recommending approval of the use permit to allow for the community clubhouse at the Santa Clara site, UP 20-02, subject to the conditions of the approval presented in Exhibit 15 of the staff report. And with that, our presentation is concluded, and we will turn it over to you for your deliberation. As, as you know, staff is here to answer any questions with regard to county involvement. You have the applicant, and you have representatives from AES to answer any questions related to the EIR. We had planned on a short break in between our presentations and your deliberation, and so I will turn to Chair Sunram to, to take the meeting over from here.
Thank you, Scott, and everybody else for the presentations. Open it up to the commissioners. To, if you guys have any questions or comments about anything, please.
I'm going to, this is Bob Malli. I'm going to have some questions, but probably not until we hear any public input, if we can get through that without any disruptions. And
We have somebody in the conference room. Okay, they muted their microphones so they weren't talking to us.
So I suggest we go ahead and take a break if you want, and then come back, open it up to the public input and see how that goes, and then we can, we can move on. I have, I have questions, but I would like to hear input from the public first and then going to all that.
John?
That works for me, Mr. Chair.
Christina?
It works for me as well.
Okay. I would actually like to take at least a five-minute break.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Big as long as you want, you're the man.
Well, doesn't take me that long to get rid of my coffee, but.
Oh, my God.
Okay, let's, let's take, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Thank you.
Okay, are we all ready?
Yeah.
All right. So I suppose we're going to try this. Jake, I think I'm going to leave this in your hands on how to manage this, but we're going to try and go for public comment.
Okay, yeah, so I have some dialogue out there trying to get people to raise their hands. We'll just move through, and I'll unmute people one by one and give them the floor to speak. In the past, we have unmuted the entire room and opted in for people to contribute that way. I think we should avoid that this time. I think we should avoid that this time. We do have some participants that have joined via phone. I can isolate them as a separate unit and then just unmute them and give them the opportunity to speak because they cannot raise their hands via Zoom. So we could just opt in to that small group on their own.
Okay, it looks like we have three raised hands.
Yes, so we'll start calling all these people if we're ready.
Okay. Let's see. Mark, was Mark in the conference room trying to say something? He has his hand up.
They...
There you go. Are we going to...
Mark Roberts.
Do we need timing of our generally our three-minute requirement or due to size of the project, are we going to extend that?
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Mark. I would like to do a three-minute restriction on that. Is there... Have we figured out how to do that, Jake?
Yeah, I think Kate was going to do a timer for that.
Okay.
Kate, I have made you co-host, so you can unmute yourself as well.
Yes, I have a timer and when it hits three minutes, I'll chime in and let you know, Mr. Chair, that it's been three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so the first comment we have here, let me pull this information back, is Carabelle. Carabelle, I'm going to move to unmute your mic here. All right, you're unmuted. Can you give me a sound check?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I don't know if we can do, oh, maybe is that... Do you want video also? It says cannot start video because host is disabled.
I have asked you to start your video and please state your first and last name for the record.
Okay, hi there. Okay, I'm Terry Holberg, Lake County resident in Middletown. And I appreciate all the work that has gone into the work for the Gwinoc development. That I don't have an issue with. I'm here to speak on the workforce housing on Santa Clara Avenue. You know, JD spoke of low-density, but that seems to be on the Gwinoc property and not on this 12-plus acres there in the Middletown area. They've also said that they don't want to affect the land and that seems to be the Gwinoc area also and not our neighborhood. We're opposed to this project on Santa Clara Avenue, not just because it's in our backyard. We've chosen to live in the country and it doesn't seem fair to the rest of the community to have such a large development in our neighborhood. Bigger is not always better, is my feeling. So I'm asking, please, don't do the rezone for the optional dwellings or the duplex units. I think, I don't know the whole plans, but the two-story units would seem really invasive to our property, our privacy. Of course, power lines and streetlights are a concern because we do like to watch the stars. We are in the country. The county's been through so many changes in the last six years and I hope that you'll really look closely and reconsider the density of this project. It's not about revenues, but it's about quality of life here in the county. The property is, part of it is in a floodplain and we have concerns about that. If they build up the land, it most likely will cause our property to flood. There's some debris, dirt piles at the east side of the property, I would say, that we have concern with also what it consists of. Let's see. And Park Avenue, I think they would want to use that as access. It is a dirt road and it's not county-maintained at this time. We would be concerned about the traffic on 175. We're like across the highway from the firehouse. So the traffic, it's traffic on that affecting the firehouse and us and then parking in our neighborhood that there's usually always extra cars when people move in. And I know there's been some impact reports done. I think for the most, they look at the present and we don't know what's in store for us in years to come with climate changes. Droughts don't work on a schedule as they're looking to do a well out in the Butts Canyon area.
Three minutes.
Is that a warning or do I get to finish my sentence?
If you could finish your sentence, sure, please.
Thank you. And I have two other persons here that want their three minutes also, please. Let's see. And please don't forget that just down the road, the Superfund site that had already affected other wells in the past. We can't go back and it's important that we consider and manage our resources and our growth. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Here's other persons that would like to contribute.
I'm Jake Leary, 50-year resident in Lake County.
Hold on, just one second.
I'm just concerned about the Santa Clara project. The housing behind our property would impact all of our lives. We are in a flood zone there, so they're either going to have to build it up or they're going to have to build all our houses up. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Howell Carabelle. I'm an adjoining property owner on the Santa Clara site. We've seen flooding on our property in years past. 10-inch rainfall days, we've had up to seven or eight inches of water, standing water on our property. If there's any change in the lay of the land on the Santa Clara workforce housing project, we will flood guaranteed, guaranteed. I'm a geologist by schooling, worked in the geysers for many years. We've seen it. We've seen it at least three or four times. Water flows from south to north and goes out onto the Santa Clara property. It's definitely an impact that if there's any raising of the land, we will flood. We're concerned about Park Avenue, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. You're taking 12 acres, of which most of it will be covered by concrete, asphalt, houses. There will be nowhere for that water to go except in our, on our properties. That's the main concern. I'm concerned about the fact that this land was supposed to be residential, houses for sale under the original plan. We're not sure if this is rental property for workforce housing. Are they 24/7 on the workforce housing? Is there going to be commuting on Park Avenue, which is adjoining my house? We don't know what that, what workforce housing actually means. Is it for permanent workforce for the property? Or is it for construction only, for people coming in to do the construction? It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense in a serious floodplain to build these houses out there, especially the density that they want to put in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if anybody else out there has multiple people within the same room that would like to speak, if you could just give us a little bit more time between each one of you speak, I would appreciate that. Okay, Jake?
All right, the next comment we have is from Ross Mittlemus. All right, well, give me a sound check and your first and last name.
Yes, I'm here. This is Ross Mittlemus. Shall I begin video? If you would like. Okay. Thank you, commissioners, and good morning. My name is Ross Mittlemus. I represent the Center for Biological Diversity, a nonprofit conservation organization. I'd first like to thank everyone, commissioners, and staff for the opportunity to speak, particularly for the remote accommodations provided and the related troubleshooting. The center has submitted extensive comments on the draft EIR for this project. Those comments were submitted in April. Those comments expressed our concerns about, among other things, the project's significant impacts regarding biological resources, water quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and wildfire risks and public safety. The FEIR and associated documents were released less than a week ago. Together, they total thousands of pages. We've not yet had enough time to fully evaluate them. However, even our preliminary review indicates that the EIR remains inadequate under CEQA. We ask the planning commission to recommend that the board supervisors deny approval and the EIR of the project and the EIR certification until these deficiencies can be remedied. In any event, should the planning commission calendar the matter for consideration by the board supervisors, it should allow a minimum of six weeks from today before the board hearing on the matter. This is necessary to permit the public and interested parties the time they need to adequately and intelligently review the FEIR and the thousands of additional pages of accompanying documentation. I would also refer the commissioners to the letter we submitted yesterday evening, which elaborates on these concerns that are specific to the timing of project considerations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next person we have for comment is Curtis Woodard.
Hello, how are you guys?
Hello. Will you please confirm your first and last name for the record?
Yeah, it's Curtis Woodard.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm local. I've called Hidden Valley and Middletown home since I was five. I don't know if there's much opposition to this project, but I do feel with, you know, a gentleman like Randy Sternberg's history out at Gwinoc and if he supports it, definitely has my support as well. I appreciate what this group has put together for plans and what they like to bring to our community and of course, Gwinoc. I feel like what they've, what they've got with the respect for the project itself out at Gwinoc is special. I don't see much opportunity for Lake County with public taxes in the future. I feel that people here continue to vote down, you know, the sales taxes and the increases that that happens. So I feel like our really only growth and to protect Lake County is through taxes or growth, I mean, and obviously bringing sales tax to our community. You know, the governor just reduced our school district's budget $1.6 million this year. So I support the jobs, the creative people, and the opportunities that this can bring us. I don't feel like Mike Thompson is a real advocate for Lake County. So I encourage us all to get behind Melissa in the Chamber of Commerce to welcome this, you know, sustainable community. I think that's going to be, you know, it's going to be a huge improvement for us financially and, you know, and for Gwinoc's area. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next comment we have is Richard Pritchard.
Okay.
Your mic is unmuted. May you please confirm your first and last name?
First name, Richard. My last name is Pritchard.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. The floor is yours.
Awesome, thank you. Once again, Richard Pritchard. I am the current director of golf here at Hidden Valley Lake Association at the golf course. I've been here for over seven years now. And I'm just in a big, full favor for the golf course design that I've seen for the layout going over here at the new Gwinoc facility. When I heard that Tom Doak was getting involved, I even got even more excited because looking at his work, he does not like to move a lot of earth. He likes to keep the natural resources. And from what I've seen and what I've read so far, all the natural resources look like it's going to be in place at this facility. I think that having this big, huge environment happening right now is going to bring so many more jobs available to our local community. We have young kids, we have young families, dual incomes. People are driving to Sonoma County, to Napa County. I think this is a great way to keep them in-house. Also, I believe it would be a great advocate for our golf course as well. You're going to come up, you're going to play at a facility. You're also going to want to come over and play at Hidden Valley Lake Golf Course as well. So my comment is, I'm just really welcome. I hope this goes through and I really look forward to seeing what happens in the near future.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, and just to add real quick, it has been told to me that people who are using phones to join us today, you could raise your hand by dialing *9. Once again, you could dial *9 to raise your hand if you've connected via phone. All right, the next comment we have is from Victoria Brandon.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you. You're kind of quiet.
I've had microphone problems, so I'm going to have to shout.
Okay.
First question.
Would you please confirm your...
Yeah, I'm Victoria Brandon. I'm representing the Lake County Sierra Club. I've got a question. We submitted a supplementary comment letter yesterday evening and I'd like to confirm that that was received. Okay, great. See the nod. I'm quite conflicted about this project. It's obviously a wonderfully designed piece of work. It's going to be absolutely beautiful, be an asset to the county in many respects. Economic benefits seem unquestionable. But I do think it's really important that all developments be treated even-handedly and that they may be required to abide by our own planning decisions that were adopted by the community in a larger sense. And I've been concerned all along about the additional housing and the eventual build-out being allowed on the site over and above what was permitted in the Middletown area plan. I recognize that that can be gotten around by simply rezoning the project. But there's another concern that just suddenly dawned on us a few days ago that many people would not be aware of, which is the policy in the Lake County General Plan for mixed resort developments. This was revised in 2011 by the Board of Supervisors in response to litigation that the Sierra Club had brought against the Cristolago project of Martha Lakeport. I'm not comparing the two projects. This one is 500 times better. But the general principle of having residences and resorts on the same property should mean that it should be handled in the same way. And the revised policy at that time limited the number of residential units to a maximum of the number of resort units. There was an exception for properties which were immediately adjacent to community growth boundaries. And counting up the numbers here, the requested entitlements would allow, at the most liberal interpretation, of some 550 additional residential units that build out from those allowed, from those resort units. The obvious solution is to reduce the number of residential units, but I recognize that could probably be a problem since it would certainly affect the long-term economic viability of the project. But I think this has to be addressed. It can't just be, it can't just act as if it's not there. We've got to maintain the integrity of our planning process and make sure that it is even-handed and transparent. And I'd like to see this addressed by the, by the planning department with recommendations.
Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
If I've got a little, oh, that's the end of the time. Okay, I was going to raise a question about the off-site well, which we also have real problems with. Thank you.
Okay, and Victoria, while you're still on there, I will probably, and I mentioned this to Kate yesterday, that I would be open to giving people a second chance to speak if the other commissioners are in for that. I'd just like to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak first.
Absolutely.
Is there, are you all okay with that? Bob, John, Christina?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll get back to you then. Thank you. Jake?
All right.
Just, yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay, so the next comment we have... Okay, so the next comment we have, the next person on line here is Alex89. Alex, I've unmuted your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Alex Sanchez, I just happen to be born in 89. My question is in regards to the construction of both the housing and the Gwinoc project. I'm a resident of Middletown. At first, when I heard about this development and housing, it did concern me because I do have a relative that lives right along Santa Clara, so it would affect them, but there's definitely benefits to that, to the community and the sense of jobs and future economic activity in the area. So my question is, is there any sort of outreach prior to the training center? I know you guys said that there'd be a training center for hospitality and construction, but has there been any thought about doing outreach in the county for local contractors, local labors? I know that it's a commuting county for the most part, most people go out of the county for work, but has there been any thought about a public outreach for local labor? Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. That is something, something that we will ask the applicant. Let's go ahead with public comment for right now, though, and we'll get to those questions.
All right, to move us along here, the next comment we have will be from Janay Rubio. All right, your mic is unmuted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Oh, yes, hi, my name is Janay Rubio, I'm just trying to start the video, but it just started.
Here you go.
There we go. There we go. Hi, my name is Janay Rubio, I'm a local homeowner here in the community. I actually am very excited about this project, I'm specifically speaking for the Gwinoc project and not the Santa Clara project. I'm excited to see the amount of opportunity and growth it will bring to our community as well as the amount of jobs it will create for our community. The only concerns that I had were fire safety and traffic. The concerns that I had were fully addressed. My husband, myself, and our children, we lived in Lake County since 2001. We built our home in 2007, which unfortunately we lost in the 2015 valley fire. We've since rebuilt our home, and again, my only concern was fire safety and seeing the amount of, just, I've been, I was impressed. I watched, I've watched all the videos and I've kind of read through the whole, I don't know how many pages. I have been pretty impressed with the level of concern and commitment that the fire safety program has shown so far. So as a local homeowner, I fully support this project, and I can't wait to see the opportunity that it brings to our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I don't have any more hands raised. We do have some people participating on the phone. I haven't seen them raise their hand. Once again, if you want to try to raise your hand on the phone, dial star nine. Alternatively, we can go through and unmute them if we want to do that. But that's, looks like all of the public comment we have at this time.
Well, any other commissioners want to weigh in on that? You're muted, John.
Meaning, what do we do about no more public speakers raising their hand?
Do we want to try and unmute to see if anyone's trying to speak, or are we, I guess, it should probably be a legal issue maybe too, Nicole? Just want to make sure you can unmute.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good.
Okay, so what specifically is the question? Are you asking whether or not we can?
Well, yeah, we're wondering, should we, should we unmute the phones for a second to see if anyone's trying to speak, or are we okay with not seeing any more raised hands?
I'm not clear with the, I mean, I understand after this morning, there's some, there's some concern, but if, are we only unmuting phones and not giving access to the computers?
Oh, no, people on the computers, we can see, and I do see we have Monica raising her hand. But the question is about the phones, if people are not able to figure out how to raise their hands, which Jake has mentioned how to do it, but I just want to make sure we're within the legal, our legal realm on hearing from public comment, that's all.
I think we should give the people who have not had a chance to speak, a chance to speak.
So I can, I mean, I can move to unmute the floor, as we've done before, and I could instantly mute everyone again, so I have mute and unmute all buttons.
Let's, let's go ahead and hear from Monica first, she has her haze, her hand raised.
All right, Monica Rosenthal, I've moved to unmute my mic. And will you please, looks like you're unmuted, will you please give me a sound check and your first and last name?
Oh, she muted again.
Monica Rosenthal?
Yes, hello, thank you.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm Monica Rosenthal and a Middletown resident. Good afternoon, everyone. I am very excited about this project, however, I also have some concerns in regard to the project itself out at Gwinoc. Everything sounds great, the materials look good, we've heard all the presenters say and speak to about environmental concerns, low density, and I think Cody Anderson himself said that, that this is once in a lifetime opportunity to do this well. So with regard to that, the project, I really wish that that philosophy that's happened out at the Gwinoc site itself tried to move. In Middletown, the Santa Clara project is high density on a very small lot, we're talking 12.75 acres. There is also the 37-acre property that I believe is owned by Maha or the Lotus Land Company or Corporation or somebody that where the well is at. One question I have is why not build the houses there on that 37 acres rather than on 13 acres? And, and ask for such high density and the inconsistency with the overall philosophy of the project out at Gwinoc? Again, I'd really like to see that carried through to Middletown. The 37 acres is within the community growth boundary, that lot that has the well on it at the corner of the intersection of Highway 29 and Butts Canyon. Why not put the housing development there? That is something that would be very beneficial to Middletown, as again, that is within the growth, within the growth boundary as well as the Santa Clara lot. I just, it's inconsistent for the philosophy of this prop, of this whole project to be disrespectful to the Middletown community. And number one, do a high-density location at Santa Clara, and number two, to utilize resources that belong to the community of Middletown, the water, talk about piping that all the way down to another project located six miles away. That, that would leave, as the project has said before, that the 37 acres, there is no plan for development. That is 37 acres located within the Middletown community growth boundary, that'd be left undeveloped if potentially the water resource there removed from it, leaving that 37 acres as unproductive for the town of Middletown. So that's just in conclusion, again, the entire philosophy that is put forward happening out at the Gwinoc site, I'd like to see that applied to Middletown as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, I think Jake?
Yes.
I think let's, we don't have any more raised hands, right? We do, oop, there is one here.
We have one more at this moment.
All right.
Should I pick that up?
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, so the next comment, we have SP. I mute your mic here.
I'm Annie, I'm Annie Awani, Pinoni, Kalaetak. Hi, my name is Sally Peterson. I am a resident of Middletown, I live in the heart of Middletown, right behind the post office. And the comments about the housing area, you know, we have a huge need for housing, and I would anticipate that the initial use would be for, of course, the workers and the workforce developing the project, but at some point, that's going to be much-needed housing in the area in general. Having housing so close to the town is going to help the businesses that are really struggling, because if you look at our main street here in Middletown, there's a lot of empty buildings. And I'm a business owner as well, and we've recently had to close one of our businesses on Main Street. So, so it's a much-needed population that we need in our area to help our local businesses. So moving on to that, this project, this overall project is going to be such a benefit to the county, especially to South Lake County. We need the tax dollars as a, as the county government. On another note, I would like to say that I am also the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for Middletown Rancheria. And while we did not agree with some of the things that were in the environmental report, the Maha Group and the developers and all of their consultants were very accommodating to the tribe, and we were able to negotiate a separate private agreement. And so we are very, I don't know what the word is, we feel accommodated, we're going to be working side-by-side with the construction crew, and we are going to be able to take care of our cultural resources. So that was a huge concern of the tribe, so I did want to mention how well those did work with us. And they have made all the changes that we've asked for on the project. So I just wanted to let the commissioners know that, and, and as a citizen of Middletown, I think that the entire project is a much-needed project for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Don't have any more raised hands.
So that was our last right here.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and unmute for just a minute.
Okay, sure.
The phones and see if anyone else.
Do we want to just do the phones or?
Let's do the phones, yes.
All right, so I'm going to move through these one by one here, well, not really, I'll just unmute them all here. We'll check with these phones, if you are on the phone and would like to make a comment, please start by speaking your first and last name.
Okay, I don't hear anybody speaking, give you one more chance.
First one.
Oop. See someone on the phone trying to speak? No, okay. Okay, before we finish up with this, Victoria, did you, Victoria Brandon, did you have something else you wanted to, wanted to talk about? Yes, Jake, she has her hand up now.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had, and with all the, all that was going on with the meeting, I didn't quite catch, I think this may have been explained. We have serious concerns about the water proposal to drill a separate well miles away in a different watershed and pipe that water into the project. It really does not seem necessary, there seems to be abundant water on the site, and it would be strictly auxiliary purposes. And by allotting that water for this really marginal purpose, it is removing it from the use of the community of Middletown. And as Monica mentioned, the site is within the community growth boundaries. By definition, the resources on that site were intended to be part of the Middletown infrastructure, including water supply. And something was said this morning about changes in plans there, and I'd like to ask if that has been taken off the table. What is the plan for that, that site and for that water right allotment?
Thank you, Victoria. There was some stuff mentioned about it, and I will make sure when we bring in the developers to answer some questions, I will make sure that that gets clarified also. Is somebody in the conference room trying to speak?
It was outside in the hallway.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, does anybody have any more? One last chance for public comment. Monica is back again.
All right, Monica, I'm trying to unmute your mic here. Oh, I muted you, I'm sorry. Let's try that one more time, Monica, unmute your mic. Okay, looks like you're muted.
Okay, perfect, I'm sorry, but for three minutes, it's really difficult, you know, to, to get information clear and concisely. I know that as, as Victoria was just saying, you know, that, that's one of the issues here is, is that more or less taking resources from the community of Middletown in order to, to support this project out at the Gwinoc site is just, is not, is not fair to the community of Middletown or to the Middletown area plan, and its further growth potential and opportunity. There's much talk when the Middletown area plan was constructed, that to have enough, enough land or enough, enough choices for developers to come in and build within the community of Middletown for, as Sally Peterson was mentioning, the much-needed housing that is needed in Middletown. We do want Middletown to grow, and to grow in a way though that is conducive to the atmosphere and the ambiance of Middletown, and that's not super-high density. That is, I believe, as Terry, one of the first speakers today, had talked about what the area being, kind of a rural community. So it has purposely been laid out in zoning to allow for appropriate, appropriate size, appropriate spacing, appropriate zoning for its community growth and development. So to put high-density on the Santa Clara lot, and then to take away from the Middletown community 37 acres and its potential for, for opportunity for growth there, along as Victoria said, with its resources, which includes water, is just not, is not environmentally sound for the, the Middletown area. So again, I'm fully in support of the project out at Gwinoc and everything they're doing out there, and I would just like that same philosophy of treating the area well and respectfully. I'd like to see that happen in Middletown as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, one last chance, anyone else here?
Got a hand up.
Rod. We have another hand pop up here, we'll call Rod's iPad here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
First and last name?
This is Rod Field. I'm a local resident of Hidden Valley, been there for the past 20 years. And I just want to say that I, I have read the documentation provided by the developer, and I totally support this project. I think it's going to be a great thing for Southern Lake County, on a Middletown I think it's going to be a great thing for Southern, um, Lake County, on a Middletown. Um, it'll help, like Mr. Woodard said, school district. Um, it'll bring a class, um, to our area, and, and with the development team, their, their approach to the project, the layout, the low density, um, and their, their commitment that they have to the surrounding script and layout and the love of the land, I think is big, um, for this, for this development. And I think that the board of supervisors should support this project. That, that's it.
Thank you, Rod. Okay, I'm gonna do another, another last call for raised hands and motion to speak. Okay, I don't see anybody jumping in here. So... I will go ahead and close public comment period. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so I will let one of you guys go ahead and go first, if you wish.
John, it's your district, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Bob, Mr. Chair. Uh, I really appreciate the presentations that were offered to the commission and the public today. They mirror the kinds of presentation that I received when I did a tour of the facility. In other words, I didn't hear anything different when I toured the facility than what was presented here to the public today, which is a, a pretty, um, well-integrated and thought-out plan, in my opinion. The scale is unlike anything that Lake County has tackled in the past. Um, and yet, there are a few things I think are proper to go over, things that came up in the green sheets and comments that were made on, in the course of the presentation. I fully support the idea of hiring locally, whether it's contractors or for people to eventually work, um, out at the Guenoc facility in any number of capacities. Um, I've always been curious about the helipads and the size of the reservoir, that kind of thing. And Ms. Sawyer, in her presentation, referred to two helipads, um, for emergency response. But it sounds like to me there perhaps is one dedicated helipad for emergency response near the fire facility station, but then the other one is at a welcoming kiosk. And so I assume that means they anticipate a number of people arriving by helicopter rather than by vehicle. That's a question I have. There was a letter from Caltrans, although it wasn't on official letterhead of any kind, that raised some questions about traffic study, et cetera. Um, it would be helpful to clarify whether that well, if it is ever tapped into, is intended just for the resort or also for the workforce housing. I personally think the workforce housing is a welcome development in the midst of Middletown, and will bring more foot traffic to downtown, uh, more people shopping at the local stores, and, um, becoming integrated into the community through the school system, et cetera. So, uh, I am optimistic and I have a positive reaction to this project, but I think there's a few outstanding questions to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Hey, John. Um, I'm gonna, maybe this is a little different way of doing this. If you guys aren't in agreement, let me know. But I was thinking, do you have something you wish the developers to respond directly to any of your questions?
Yes. Uh, well, sure, if this is the time to, you know, discuss amongst ourselves and ask those questions. The other question was regarding the, um, Red Hills ABA designation, which was raised by the Farm Bureau. Um, there is that appellation already in Lake County, and I think they were concerned about some kind of confusion regarding the use of Red Hills. And I don't know if that is something that has been brought to the attention of the developer, the applicant. So those would be the two things I'd like to hear about specifically.
Okay, I think, I think the Red Hills has actually already been dropped. Um, but I did see it still mentioned in some of the, some of the.
Maybe I, maybe I just, I apologize.
If somebody would like to respond from the developer? We got a couple of them on here.
Well, while we have some silence, I can explain that, um, that was a comment that we got on the draft EIR. And in response, the development team did change the name of that local resort cluster to the Deniston Golf Course, um, Estates. So that was reflected in some of the changes in the final EIR that we made.
Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Ryan. Um, this is Catherine Philopakis. We had simply forgotten about the fact that, of course, there's the well-known Red Hills ABA. And we, the Red Hill Resort and the Red Hills ABA, we hadn't thought about that. And obviously, since we're planning on being in the wine business ourselves, we do respect the, um, importance of geographic name designations. So that was renamed as the Deniston Golf Estate Project after we found out.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Kirsty Shelton on the development team. Uh, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Hess's question about the two helipads. Um, it, it is accurate. One of them is an emergency, uh, helipad, which will be built as soon as possible as part of the very first phase of construction, um, used for emergency purposes only. And then as the, uh, project develops, when the market demands happen, uh, there is a request as part of a specific planned development for a guest helipad in addition to a float plane dock that is accessed on the Deeter Reservoir. So they are two separate. Um, obviously, the emergency helipad would be built first and welcome kiosk would happen then in response to market demand. And then I believe you had a second question in regards to, uh, hiring local contractors. Uh, for everyone's public benefit on the, uh, meeting today, we have a public website, www.guenocvalley.com. And there is a section, if you are a local contractor, if you are a local artisan, if you're a local farmer, um, anyway you want to be involved with the project, please sign up, provide your name, and absolutely, uh, it is the intention to rely on the local workforce for boat construction and, uh, for, as part of the meeting.
Thank you, Kirsty.
Um, Chair, I'd also like to just clarify, um, the question from the commissioner about my statement regarding the emergency use only of the helipads. That was a misstatement. It just came out, and we actually did study one of the helipads as being used potentially by patrons in the EIR. So that, that is correct, what Chris, what Kirsty just indicated.
Okay, and then I believe I also saw in the study, uh, and I'm not sure it was in contact with the aviation industry, I don't remember who it was, maybe it was the FAA, that the emergency helipads, there's not, they fall under some exemptions, I believe, as far as being able to put those in. Whereas the one for public, there's all kinds of studies that have to go in as far as noise and the flight plans and all that really has to be evaluated.
Correct, and, and there are approvals from Caltrans Aviation that are required. And one of the additions that we made in the final EIR was to include some of the extra noise modeling that they would need to see, um, to issue those approvals. And that was included as appendix, a TTM, I believe, Air Transportation Technical Memo.
I did see that. Um, okay, uh, Christina or Bob or is Eagle, there he is, yeah, Eagle's still here too.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, I had a, I had a few questions for, uh, the, uh, applicants, representatives, uh. I didn't hear or really see much about, is there going to be a private security force on property for the, uh, for the housing community and separately for, uh, the, uh?
The resort.
The resort area. Um, is, is the housing community going to be a gated community? Uh, uh, in the fact that will not basically be open to the public? Uh, and, uh, have they had any discussions with our sheriff to discuss, uh, law enforcement problems, uh, as they arise?
Somebody from the developer wished to address those questions? Or will somebody please?
Sure, happy to. Um, and in response to your question about security, yes, there will be private security, um, for both the resort and the residential. Uh, there will be a series of gates. Um, the entire network of roads are private roads. So there will be a first entry gate, and at that entry gate, um, there will be a security kiosk. Um, in addition, once you get into the resort, um, and you have, say you're a resident or a member of, uh, the hotel, you would then go through another series of gates.
Okay. So yes to, yes to the fact that it is a gated community. Uh, how, how large of a security force are you, uh, envisioning? Are we talking about five people, twenty people, a hundred people, what?
You know, I don't know if they've done that analysis at this date. They do, uh, intend for it. Um, I think they, they've accommodated for enough, um, locations for security, uh, the kiosks. And, and also in that emergency response center, there'll be another area for local law enforcement or security to, um, be housed. Uh, but the number of security, I don't think they've actually determined yet.
Okay, so there will be some kind of a, there would be some kind of an office, uh, in that, uh, emergency, uh, building?
Yeah, and also at the backup house.
Okay.
Well, at the backup house and the emergency response center act as a security location and in addition, um, has an office and a conference room even fully kitted out in case it needs to be a full emergency operation.
Okay, and do you know if any discussions have happened with, uh, the sheriff's office itself about staffing and what their requirements are going to be?
Yeah, only through the EIR process. Um, happy to have continued conversations, happy to work together with local law enforcement. Um, as you can imagine, this is a multi-year build-out. So when the time comes, we'd be happy to, uh, start negotiations and work with the local law enforcement to make sure that it's adequate.
And then also Bob's question about the Santa Clara sites. Uh, you mentioned that that was going to be gated a- as well as have security or just security?
Um, the Santa Clara site is different. It is entirely public streets. So all of the streets in the Santa Clara subdivision would be public, none of which would be gated. Um, in addition, if you looked at the subdivision design, there's a landscape buffer. Most of the street influence has, uh, introduction to a park or landscape buffer. So, uh, it would not be gated, it would not be private, it would be more of like a typical subdivision.
Does that help, Bob?
Yeah, uh, my, uh, my, my next question, uh, probably still with, uh, Kristy is that, uh, uh, I, I suppose you heard the suggestion from, uh, Monica Rosenthal that the property be looked at, uh, where the, uh, where the well is. Do, does the developer own that, uh, piece of property right there on, uh, uh, Butts Canyon and Highway twenty-nine?
Yeah, in fact, uh, we, we looked at both the, um, the well property and the Santa Clara property at the same time. Uh, and, and beginning conversations with people from the county, and, uh, we, we had a lot of support to actually put the housing in, uh, central Middletown. Uh, the, the well location is outside or within the community growth boundary, but outside of different districts, so it would have required expensive rezoning, et cetera. So we chose to stay within the general plan density for the, uh, Santa Clara property. We chose to mirror the exact subdivision that was inspired and maintain the same, um, project layout that was already there. Um, and we, we, and in addition, we really felt that it was important that the infill housing happened within Middletown. At this point, we have no plan for the well site. Um, it is a Keystone corner location to the property, and, uh, I imagine, um, it'll be, uh, kept as a ranch home, uh, until the market demands anything different. At this point, there is no plan.
Okay. And it, uh, to address, uh, one of the questions from the earlier, uh, folks that, uh, commented, uh, in regards to flooding, uh, once your project is done or while your project's being done, how are you going to ensure that your runoff doesn't impact the surrounding, uh, properties?
Yeah, uh, that's very important to the developer. Um, obviously, we've taken a lot of consideration and care into acknowledging the floodplain characteristics of that particular area. Um, the civil engineer is on, you heard earlier from Cody Anderson, they did extensive floodplain analysis and stormwater analysis as part of the tentative map. Um, as part of the project, most of the, uh, the, the hundred-year storm runoff will be retained on-site. Um, it's part of state law, but we've also designed to have certain retention areas for stormwater. Um, it is in the floodplain AE zone. Uh, I know, uh, permanent design engineers work extensively with the County of Lake, uh, Water Resources Department. Uh, so the, 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 the buildings themselves have to be built one foot above base flood elevation.
Okay. So, so the developer believes that they'll be able to retain a good portion of the rain runoff from all of that paved area and, and the buildings?
Yeah, Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is designed to retain a hundred-year, uh, storm event. Um, I remember on the design, I can show you, uh, um, on the site plan, that there are specific areas for, uh, stormwater detention because of the flooding, and, uh, it has been designed to accommodate for it.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure that the questions these folks have asked are being answered.
Can I make a quick clarification?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That was wrong.
Just so we're accurate, um, it's.
Say your name again.
Uh, Cody Anderson, sure, design engineers, um, civil engineer for the, for both the project, uh, main project site and did the analysis for the Santa Clara reservoir. Uh, the project is, uh, tentative map layout is in compliance with the local floodplain administrator and the FEMA requirements to not impact the hundred-year floodplain. But we're not retaining a hundred-year storm on-site. That's a, that's a tall task for any site. We're in full compliance with post-construction stormwater regulations per the state and EPA, but we're not, um, in fact, retaining that storm on-site. We're just staying outside of the hundred-year floodplain per FEMA requirements.
Okay. I, I assumed that that was the situation, but, uh, Cody, uh, is there a way to remove that water from the site? Uh, is there, is there any, um, I, I, I'm sure a drainage ditch wouldn't be big enough to handle it, but, uh, i- is there any other way to, uh, get that extra water away from the site so that it does not inundate the surrounding properties? Because you're going to be built up on your pad probably two to three feet, since they estimated that the high water level was one to three feet. Uh, so, uh, with that elevation, uh, that water's going to go off your property onto, uh, the surrounding properties, I would assume.
So the, the site is designed to be outside of the, uh, the floodway, based on the data that we have, um, so.
And I, I'd like to just add to this as well, because this is one of the issues, obviously, that we addressed within the environmental impact report. And what the grading plan has shown is that the fill that's been added in the floodplain has been offset through excavation. So there's a balanced, um, cut and fill, so we're not changing the base flood elevation. Um, so it shouldn't result in off-site changes in flood flow patterns that, that currently exist.
That's correct. Thank you.
So the addition of hard surfaces, even at, at the same level, is not going to increase the runoff?
Commissioner Malley, this is Scott DeLeon. I'll, I'll jump in on this, and as the Director of Water Resources, one of the things that we're going to be doing is looking at their drainage calculations. You're absolutely correct. The, the new paving, uh, the new impervious surfaces resulting from the buildings are going to increase the runoff, and it's. And it's the uh incumbent on the developer to ensure that no increase in runoff is, goes beyond their property. Uh, there are a number of uh potential ways to do that in the Middletown area. Uh, and having been a, a, a civil engineer in Lake County for about the last thirty years, uh, uh, one of the things that we do in Middletown is we use the, the hybrid ripper loading rate uh of the soil to uh as underground retention uh to uh, to mitigate that increase in the runoff. So I suspect that's what we're probably gonna see uh in our plan review. Uh, but it's gonna be incumbent upon them uh to demonstrate with calculations uh and design uh that the increase in runoff from the impervious surfaces uh don't leave the site.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, we're in agreement with both, both statements from the county.
Thanks, Cody. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think that's all for now.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Christina, do you wish to take the floor?
Um, I, um, I'll just kind of reiterate. I just appreciate Bob bringing up the, the public's comments on their concerns with the Santa Clara project and the runoff and the flood. Um, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I don't really have too much more to say. I'm excited for it.
Okay. Eagle, uh, would you like to ask any questions?
Um, I, I don't really have um qu- questions per se. I, I do wanna um make mention um that I, I do have questions regarding um, our concerns regarding biological resources, the Valley Oak Preservation Plan, Cultural Resource Protections, Oak Mitigation Plan. Um, so uh first I wanted to say um that I haven't had the opportunity since we received the information on Friday to review all of the documents associated with this project. Um, I got through probably a, I would say a quarter of uh the documents. And so one of my, one of my concerns is the timeline and of us receiving the information and being able to actually process and digest everything in the reports to make a, a adequate judgment and decision on the project. Um, so I do have concerns that um, I didn't have enough time to do that. Um, I, I believe it was mentioned earlier by one of the uh, the people commenting that that's, that's been a concern. And so I first want to acknowledge that I agree with that comment, that I didn't have enough time to review all of the documents and to raise um critical questions with, with the entire project itself. Um, I'm pretty well versed in cultural resource protection. Um, and one of the things I wanna say really quickly in regards to um the cultural resource protection, I know Sally mentioned the tribe has a private agreement with the, the developers. And so I don't know if any of my concerns would, would be answered in those types of agreements that the tribe has with the developers. Um, but one of the concerns I have is that in all the reading through the cultural resource sections I've seen, the, the primary component is scientific value and not tribal cultural resource value. And so that's always a concern when I look at um any type of cultural resource protection plans and reports. Um, again, I looked at the biological resources, you know, skimmed through it. And there was about forty plants that I identified that is a part of the landscape and, and potential to be impacted. And those forty different plants have uh tribal beneficial uses. And so again, my concern is for the impact to those plants. Um, how is that gonna be mitigated? What areas are gonna actually be impacted? Where are the, where are the biological resources at? And so those are some of the questions I, I guess I have um as of right now. But again, um, I think the timing of the project, the information coming uh to myself, again, I wanna say I didn't, I, I didn't have the opportunity to read all sixteen hundred pages. And, and so for myself, um, I would like more time to digest this project, because it is a big project and it has to be done correct the first time. And anybody who um feels it's not being done, the only avenue for remedy is litigation after that. And so I, I think it being done right the first time is important and, and again, uh, just disclose that I didn't have the opportunity because of the, the short notice uh to review everything. So that's, those are just my general comments. Um, and, and I would like more time to do that.
Okay, Eagle, if I may ask, did you get the chance to visit the site down there?
No, I, I didn't. Um, I, I received an email and invitation to come out and visit. Um, I'm currently still working uh my full-time job. And so I didn't have time to get out um to the site, uh, but that invitation was extended to me.
Okay. I will, I, I would like to say that I was shocked to find that they actually have their own uh greenhouse, well, I shouldn't say greenhouse, I guess nursery operation going where they are um growing native plants for use as landscaping and their stuff that they have been growing from seed that they are getting uh around the site. So I, you know, I, I was, I was completely shocked by seeing that. Um, which I think is, I don't know if that helps you a little bit, but, and I do understand your concern about uh not being able to get through everything. I know I certainly wasn't either. Um, did you have any, any thing you wanted to speak, you wanted to ask directly of the developers, Eagle?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, I just received an email from Caltrans and it's, they wanted to make sure that their letter that I had sent to all of the commissioners was read into the record. I don't know if you wanna do that or if you want me to do it.
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll go ahead and have you do that, sure.
All right, um, it says, greeting board members, we received the Guanac Valley FEIR response to comments, staff report and associated documentation late Friday afternoon, June twelfth, two thousand twenty, three working days before this hearing. Considering the cursory review due to the limited timeframe, we only have a few comments which should not be considered comprehensive. First, the additional traffic impact analysis, TIA, when done for future phases of this project should include a VMT analysis at each new phase. New counts should be conducted for each additional TIA. Future TIA's should address how OPR's goals for a reduction of fifteen percent in VMT could be achieved in future project phases. Second, response to comments, A seven dash fourteen, we do not support no known available funding and other arguments against providing public transit services to the GVD site as a VMT reduction mitigation measure. The size of the proposed resort community and range of activities at the GVD site will generate vehicle traffic, trips, VMT and GHG that will have significant impacts. We recommend that project proponents work with the Lake Transit Authority and county government to provide a public transit connection between the GVD site and Middletown. Local area residents or GVD community resident, residents, sorry, could be considered or could be served by public transit meeting rural mobility and equity goals. And in parentheses, mitigation measure three point one three dash four TDM. Third, MM three point one three dash four TDM. As stated in our April comment letter, we recommend substantially increasing bicycle parking above the one and fifteen ratio stated in the GVD parking requirements table notes. In the appendix, GVD zoning ordinance, installing bicycle facilities is a feasible and relatively inexpensive VMT reduction measure that could promote and increase bicycle use and serve local and resort community staff, residents, patrons and visitors. This would be consistent with appendix TDM plan strategies and appendix SPOD circulation and trail plans. We continue to recommend developing bike routes for employees, visitors and residents for local travel in the GVD as well as to Middletown as an explicit mitigation measure, measure to reduce VMT. In the statement of overriding consideration, section two point one three, page one twenty-four, the traffic mitigation language for MM three point one three dash two improvements for Butts Canyon Road intersection number seven needs to be revised to reflect the MM three point one three dash two improvement language elsewhere in the FEIR. Attached is the copy of Caltrans North Region Right-of-Way Engineering Requirements for the Preparation of Documents and MAPS, April second, two thousand twenty. This is a reference for Caltrans procedural comments relating to the right-of-way oversight encroachment permits. Due to a brief timeframe, due to the brief timeframe of your review, we have not been able to determine with a high level of confidence whether transportation impacts associated with this project have been adequately addressed or mitigated. Nor can we give a recommendation to the planning commission or the Board of Supervisors at this time as to the adequacy of this EIR in identification or mitigation of transportation impacts. Considering that we have had less than a week to evaluate and compose a response to the FEIR, we request that these comments be read into the record at the public hearing, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty. We will continue to work with our staff, experts to evaluate the EIR and we will provide any additional relevant comments as they are developed. We look forward to working with the county and project proponents as this project moves forward. Thank you sincerely, Rex A. Jackman, Branch Chief, District One Planning. And the attachments that they were speaking of were attached to the, this letter with the green sheet that was sent to you all this morning.
Right, thank you. I had a question for staff uh on the LU six point twelve. The, it was brought up by Victoria Brandon. Um, that, the issue that arose with the Crystal Lago. And it, it pertains to the amount of residential units uh compared to uh vacation units or hotel units, I suppose. And is it? Anyway, just more clarification. Please?
Well, Mr. Senator, sorry. Uh, we'll need to, I, we're all kinda looking at each other here. Um, we might need a couple of minutes to, to get to, get to that specific question.
Okay.
I know there was some discussion about it this morning. Um, I don't know uh if um anyone else on the phone uh or on, on the meeting here, uh, who was in that meeting this morning has anything they'd like to offer, but um, there was some discussion about that and we'll, we'll see if we can get something to you uh here in very near future.
Okay, and?
If I may?
Uh, yes, Nicole.
This is Nicole. Uh, my understanding and if someone who was
You went on to mute. Nicole?
Sorry about that. I was not on, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was not on the call this morning. Um, that was um Anita who participated in this morning's call. The, my understanding however is that the um policy LU dash six point one two language in the general plan amendment as proposed here will be um um amended to include a different phrase which exempts the Middletown area plan from this particular section. So the language that would be added would be other than those, other than those within the special study area of the Middletown area plan. And the full language for that particular po- um
Well, no, this is, this, this project is outside of the Middletown area plan, I believe. I mean, because we're making our own area plan for the Guanac Valley. Is that correct also?
It is, it, it, the site isn't within a special study area of the Middletown area plan.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Nicole. Nicole, were you finished or I interrupted you, I know?
She's muted.
Perhaps she's thinking
Sorry, hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I'm not sure why I keep doing that. Okay, so the full language then um would be i- in, if the recommendation to the board would be to change the general, to make a general plan amendment and that amendment would include the changing of the preamble, the policy LU dash six point one two, which would read as follows. The county shall encourage development of resorts while ensuring land suitability and compatibility with surrounding land uses. Mixed-use resort proposals, other than those within the special study area of the Middletown area plan, um, requesting increased residential density may be considered outside the community growth boundaries provided that, and then the rest of the, that section would pres- would follow.
This is, excuse me, this is uh John. So is this language that has been proposed to the county by the developer or to, by the county to the developer? Or did you put this language together as a group?
My understanding that it, it was um, it was a discussion between the um involved parties, so the applicant and the, and the um consultants and CDB and um county council.
So that's agreed upon language that entered all the parties?
Uh, as far as I understand, the com- yes.
Yes. Yes.
Now, I do, I do feel that this project is, this, the size is, you know, the, the footprint, I should say, total encompassing for far way greater than Crystal Lago. So i- i- in that aspect, I don't, I don't feel that it's completely comparable. However, I do agree with Victoria Brandon about, about, you know, it's, it is language that we have and we do have to address it. Um, you know, because we can't say, well, this project deserves to be exempt whereas this one did not, you know? Uh, so, um, if we're gonna go ahead and change the wording, I just, I wanna be careful in, you know, settings any kind of precedent that that will get used upon us in the future. Bob, do you have any um institutional knowledge that you may be able to share with us? You, were you here when Crystal Lago was going through?
No, actually, it was before me.
Oh, wow.
If, if I may address that briefly, I'm not sure if this will help at all. Um
Sure.
He, the language that was ultimately decided upon that specifically mentions the Middletown area plan um was because we couldn't speak at this moment to other area plans. So if there were other area plans that this exception could apply to, we could have used language that said, that literally said, other than those was, was adopted area plans. But because we weren't sure if there were, it would, that language would have been applicable elsewhere, we could not use it here. So we were specific instead of general. So it wasn't intended to single out or carve out an exception. It was intended to not be broader than we are capable of being without knowing whether or not it applied in other parts of the county.
That's, uh, this is John. That's useful to me, Nicole, thank you. Um, it, I was curious whether this would be interpreted as creating an unfair advantage for a particular party or not. But it sounds like you're saying that is not the case here.
My understanding of the conversation that, the conversation was in that, along that line and that it started with a general, general application, general language that would have, that would have applied elsewhere, but we weren't sure if it could. And we didn't want to create unnecessary complications by applying it everywhere.
Got it.
Right.
Okay. What is uh, Mr. Chair, uh?
Go ahead.
If I could ask uh, it's either staff or the developer, uh, what is the big push right now to get this before us and then to the Board of Supervisors? The FI, or the final EIR uh was just released uh within the last week or so. And uh i- i- it, it is And it, it, it is, I agree with Eagle that it, it's a, a very large document that needs some pretty heavy perusal. I have the draft that they gave me and that was hard enough to go through, and now I have not seen other than what was given to us electronically, I haven't seen the, the final EIR, so I don't know exactly what changes were made in between the two documents. If I knew that better, then maybe I could make a, a better decision as to whether we're on, you know, the proper timeframe or not. But it, it seems to be pushing it, it seems to be pushing it in front of us very quickly when the, you know, when the document's only a week or so old, so.
I do agree with, with both of you on that, and I would certainly like to see a little bit more time, so I would like to hear from staff why, I mean, I, I understand that, you know, time is always of the essence when you're developing a project, but this is enormous. And we do want to make sure we take, take all the proper steps to make sure we review everything we possibly can. So Scott, please.
Well, I guess my only response to that would be, the draft came out in February.
February 21st.
And, and yes, the revisions to the document or the revised or the proposed final EIR was released on Friday. Within the timelines allowed for this meeting, there were some minor modifications made to, to the EIR. There were additional, and, and in my opinion, the conditions and the changes that were made to the, to the EIR were more stringent and, and were reflective of efforts made by the, the developer to address comments that were made by the public. So I, I don't think anything was relaxed, I don't think any conditions were relaxed. If anything, again, I think the condition stringent. The, the draft EIR was published in February, there was not a whole lot changed to it between now and, and then. So I, I, that'd be the only thing that I could offer. And, and yes, the, the timeframe for reviewing of the final, final EIR, that time might be compressed for some, but again, that document's been out there for a while and that's all I can offer to you.
Scott, did, did the, did the final EIR come out with a, a document showing what changes had been made, if, if they were so minor? It would seem like, you know, a document that, that short could have come out at the same time, just to say, these are the changes that were made to this document.
Yes, I, I can speak to that. So volume one of the final EIR is broken into four or five chapters, I believe. The first chapter summarizes the changes to the project and the additions to the technical studies that were made, and I think it's a, it's probably about a two-page summary, and if you'd like, I'd be happy to summarize the minor changes to the project that were made between draft year and final year because they're, they're, they're not very significant. I think the most significant change was the addition of the habitat connectivity easements that we described throughout the presentation. So that is one place in the EIR where you can find, you know, a decent summary of how the EIR has changed since the draft. Also, volume two, which is the, the revised draft EIR, any changes to that document that were made to it since it was published in February are shown in text as either in underline or strikeout, so that, so it's apparent what was modified.
But you have to go through the whole document in order to see all that, that's my point.
You do.
If, if it is a minor change, you know, then a, a document showing us, you know, page 1,200 has this change on it, you know, that, that's my only concern is that we've already, we've already looked at the document, but how do we know what changes were made when we are, we're adopting the final and we haven't, we haven't seen what changes there are?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I do also want to point out that the executive summary, which is a summary of the draft EIR conclusions, is also published in underline, strikeout, and so that would be a very quick way to look to see what were the significant changes in terms of changes to the significance of impacts, which there were none, and also how were the mitigation measures adjusted? So that will be shown right in the executive summary, so you wouldn't have to flip through the whole, you know, 600-page document.
Okay. Maybe some exclamation, or explanation of what we're looking for and where to find it would, would be helpful next time. We, we don't have this many big projects, but when we have these big projects, there's always question about what changes were made and, and, you know, what are we approving? You know, that kind of thing.
So I will, we'll mention, Bob, that the volume, the final EIR, volume one is 282 pages, volume two is 330, 733 pages, and volume three is 382 pages, so you're looking at almost 1,400 pages. And for me, which, to echo what Eagle said, you know, I mean, I still work full-time and more than full-time with what I do. So that's what I've been focusing on for the last couple of days, is trying to get through all of that and seeking out all those changes. So I do hear your concern on that, Bob, and I do echo that. So I guess, do we have? What, in this, maybe Ryan or Kirsty might want to answer, what if, if we were to postpone this for, or are we able to? That would be a question for staff. Would we be able to postpone this for a week? What are the ramifications of that to you guys or to the county, to, to staff? If that may be the way the commission even, even is considering? So I'm just asking for info on that.
From, from a Sequo perspective, there are, there are no ramifications if you need additional time.
Kirsty? For the, as far as the project?
Yeah, I, I'll defer to legal counsel, Catherine Philippakis. I'm here with the developer and obviously we want to provide the commission with plenty of time to review the necessary documents. So as long, I don't know when the next regular hearing is, I'll defer to Kate if she wanted to add anything else.
Is that, is the board looking at possibly extending this to, to give more time to review the documents and to possibly come up with more questions? Or, I mean, certainly everything that I've gone through, I am super impressed with. I do kind of, I do feel, I guess, as far as the site on Santa Clara Avenue, looking at that, in my opinion, I kind of like to see some of these sites within growth boundaries that were previously laid out for more, for less dense. You know, I think going forward, it is imperative for planning, the planning process to possibly condense some of those into a little bit higher-density developments for future growth versus continuing low-density going outwards. So as far as, you know, for my concerns for the Santa Clara property, I think everything has been met, and I realize some people may not agree with that, but we do have to look, you know, 30, 40 years down the road, do we want to continue to see the type of growth that we currently have that far down the road? At some point, we have to look at starting to recommend more sites like this, and I think what they have planned there is very well laid out. And then, you know, same goes with the Guanac Valley site. You know, they have done a very good job, I mean, it's an immense property, and when you go out and look at it, going out and looking at it for me, which it had been probably 30 years since last time I was on that ranch, I hadn't, I didn't even acknowledge then what it was, and looking at the development that they're planning with the site, the hills, you know, the mountains, the valleys, I think it has the potential to be an extremely high-quality, you know, absolutely beautiful development.
Mr. Chair? For me, I, I think that, I think that it's a, it's a great thing and it's great for the county. I, I hope it doesn't take as many years to come to fruition as Hidden Valley did, you know? Hidden Valley was built in the late 50s, early 60s and didn't really take off until probably the, the late 80s. As far as, you know, there were a few homes in Hidden Valley, but then all of a sudden, when Sonoma County and Napa County and Marin County found that it was impossible to buy homes for the, you know, for the new workers, the new startup families and stuff, they found Hidden Valley and said, wow, you know, so, so that's when Hidden Valley took off and all the, the little bubble in 2007 kind of stopped everything for a while, but it's, it's back up now to where homes are selling for, you know, $250,000. Where in the 60s and 70s, you could buy homes in Hidden Valley for $60,000, you know? So, you know, that, I, I, I look forward to seeing, you know, rapid growth and I, I hope that this project really takes off. I think it's a great thing. But there again, you know, even, you know, we're looking at the other project outside of Hidden Valley, Valley Oaks, and how long it's taken, you know, them to get things going. They're just now opening or, or starting groundbreaking on their first commercial building, so, and that's been 10 or more years in the making, so this isn't going to happen overnight. We're 20 years down the road before, you know, this is probably a vision which may well be after me, so certainly won't be on the board, the planning commission at that time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thanks, um, you know, I'm the, I'm the retired guy, I, I have more time on my hands. I won't claim to have read every single page, but I've, I've had my eyes on a lot of them, and I found the executive summary for the final EIR to be very helpful. It, it doesn't get as granular as you're, you would like, I think, Bob, but it does make some distinctions between the prior draft document and the final. I'm very sympathetic to my colleagues' quest or interest in more time. I would be prepared to proceed today, but if the consensus is, is that in order to do a better job, we need more time, then I, I would support that.
Christina, did you have something?
Are we still, we're still scheduled for another meeting tomorrow, correct?
Uh, that is, we have had it advertised that this was going to be a two-day, but it's up to us today. So it, it was, I think it was kind of reserved for a second day.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, any comment?
Yes, please.
Uh, so, so again, I, I don't in any way by my previous comment want to dismiss all of the work that has gone into the project. Staff, the applicant's team, I, I see and recognize there's, there's a lot of beauty in the project, but I personally feel like I wouldn't be doing this commission justice if I didn't get an opportunity to review and comment and ask questions from, being able to say, I've, I've reviewed all of the concerns that I have, reviewed all the documents, also put myself in the place of everybody commenting from their perspective to try to understand all, all parties' concerns. And so like I'm saying, I, I recognize and value everybody's time, but I would respectfully ask for additional time to review all the documents.
Thank you, Eagle. And I, I, I would like to echo that too, that yes, as much time has been put into this, you know, it, it doesn't really do everyone justice for us to not have the proper time to review all the hard work, you know, for everyone to put in the months and months and then us to just say, oh yeah, it looks good, let's go on with it. It's not quite fair. Uh, yes, Catherine?
I, I'd like to make a suggestion, if, if that would be acceptable to you and to staff. I, I think you have a regularly scheduled meeting next Thursday, the 25th. You could continue this hearing to that date, and I suspect that the consultants would be able to get you a document of just the redlined pages of the EIR, which would help you to, I know that you've all reviewed the draft EIR thoroughly, I know from all the questions that you've asked and the, the, the comments that you've made, so that would give you an opportunity to see what has changed and to have some time to think about that. I think you asked a question about the board. Of course, the board has not made any decisions yet with regard to the project because it's, it's for you first to make your recommendations. So the last thing we want is for you to be rushed. I was originally going to suggest that we could give you a redline, that they could give you redline sheets today and we could discuss again tomorrow, but my feeling is that that's rushed and that the project deserves another week. And we put a lot of time into it and we want you to be confident in your decision and comfortable that the decisions that we made, when we made choices about how to craft this project, were the right ones. So the other thing I wanted to address for Commissioner Brown, you raised an issue about cultural resources and your concern that the documents all talked about scientific analysis and not tribal cultural resources. And I, I simply wanted to express that that's really because the Sequo process looks primarily from a, an objective or a data-based lens through this. But as was mentioned by Sally, we do have an agreement with the tribe. That is, of course, confidential, but it, much of the focus of that, I worked very hard on it with the tribe's lawyer, and much of the focus of that was on tribal cultural resources, so the non-Sequo side of the project.
And I do want to clarify that tribal cultural resources are now a component of Sequo, but of course we can identify them, only the tribe can identify what those are, and the county staff has been engaged with Middletown on consultation related to tribal cultural resources. So we did what we could to reflect that in the chapter.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely want to acknowledge that. Again, I, I, I've worked in the same field Sally's working in now. The, my tribe and Sally's tribe have a deep historical connection, and so I do, whenever want to speak on behalf of what their values are, I can only raise the questions from my concern, and I do respect the process and the consultation that has gone on, and I understand the scientific component of, of, of how everything is laid out. And as an advocate for cultural resource protection, those are some of the types of changes that not only tribes here in Lake County, but nationally are working to have addressed. And so I definitely appreciate all of the sensitivity and all of the knowledge that you guys are making and move with this, that part of the project forward, so thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bob.
Uh, just a quick, through you to Eagle, I, I just want to hear him say that he's okay with a week more, or is he looking to have more time than a week? That's, that's my only question.
Okay. Okay. Eagle, if we were to postpone this just for one week, will that, you feel you have enough time?
I definitely do. And, and so my only, uh, response back, I know, uh, Bob, you mentioned you had an appointment or a procedure.
Oh, yeah.
Will that impact you being available for the next meeting if it is on the 25th?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that right now, but, uh, I, I will do my best. I can call in from San Francisco as easily as I can from here, so.
We just have to make sure your hotel room, or your, um, yeah, your hotel room is available for the public. We'll roll you into the conference room at the hospital.
I think the doctor's got to let them in, so.
Yeah, we should be plenty of time.
Yeah, I do have one, one other thing before we, um, continue this discussion of postponement. Um, I had a question. This is to the developers for the water. Um, and it was mentioned back when we had our meeting, I don't remember whether it was February or March, before the COVID deal took place and we were in the, in the chambers. I do know that there was discussion on beginning to drill some wells, some groundwater wells for this project out in the Guanac Valley area. And I spoke to Randy about it briefly when I was on my tour. So I would like to get some, and then also somebody brought up the issue, one of the, um, one of the public members who spoke brought up the issue too. So I wanted to get some clarification on that. And then it's my understanding that you guys went ahead and drilled some wells and I, I'm sure it's covered in the water availability. I didn't get a chance to read through all of that. But, um, you are looking at most likely not needing this secondary well site, one. And two, that there was something required for a backup plan, a last minute or last ditch effort, I guess you could call it, as far as, um, getting funding or getting, um, approval through the E I R process or, or whatnot. So could somebody reiterate on any of that, please?
I'm happy to. Um, so as part of the water supply assessment process, uh, we drilled both test wells and production wells. Um, over the series of the past nine months, uh, the water supply assessment proved that there's absolutely enough water for the property and it's sustainable. Um, the, the property that we purchased originally for housing, um, turned out to, um, be on a large offer. And for the, uh, financer to invest in the property, it was really important to them to have a backup water source. At this point, um, the water supply assessment is very detailed. Uh, there's full analysis for both phase one and phase two that the project is sustainable.
And also, um, it's my understanding that all the surface water that is available on the property is specifically for agricultural purposes, um, or, or landscaping, I suppose, but it is not, is not used for drinking water or any other resort waters. Is that correct also?
Correct. The previous water right entitlement is for surface water irrigation, non, non-potable purposes.
Right. So I don't know if whoever brought that question up, if they're still on. I wanted to make sure that that got addressed. And does anybody else? What, what do we want to do here? Um, I'm just the chairman.
Mr. Chair, this is John.
Yes, John.
Not, I'm not clear on how much of the stuff from Caltrans that was read into the record would be reflected in the final E I R, um, seeing as they felt like they were getting their comments to us on the late side of things. So if we do decide to delay for a week, I would hope that we would have a chance to hear back from either staff and/or developer about those, some of the specific things raised by Caltrans. I got a bit lost in the acronyms and jargon at one point, but it seemed as though they were raising some important issues.
Right, maybe.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
So I think that since we are, um, going to be postponing the meeting until next week, that will be something that we'll have to in the packet for your next hearing as a responses to the Caltrans comments.
Wonderful.
Okay, and now we do need to make sure we get those, make those comments available in enough time, which probably means tomorrow. Is that, or what is our cutoff for that?
We, and, and I, I will be able to reply to them that quickly. And I can also get you, um, the errata sheets by tomorrow as well that you're looking for.
Okay, that would be great because we do have to get those out to the public as well.
Right.
Scott, looks like you want to say something.
Well, I was just going to say, we have one item scheduled for next Thursday and, uh, so there's room where we can add this project. I think what we're going to do is go ahead and put it on first thing, uh, make it the first item of the day. And, um, uh, we'll, we'll be able to do that. And, uh, Catherine, thank you very much for, uh, that, your offer, uh, to do that. And so we can facilitate that.
Okay, so we're having all this discussion about possibly postponing, but we don't have an official motion to do so, or, and technically we probably shouldn't be talking about it unless we have a motion to do so. Uh, or what, what is the board's wish?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm, oh, excuse me, Christina. Go ahead.
Go ahead, John. If you're going to make a motion, I was just going to let them know I'm okay with postponing it till next week.
Sure. Um, I would be prepared to move that we continue this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission and make it agenda item number one.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second?
Second.
I, I got you, Bob. We have a second. And then, uh, so Kate, we have to do our roll call vote on this motion unless there's any more discussion on this topic before we take it to a vote.
Chair, may I?
Yes, you may.
I leave for the recommendation. You have to state the date of the, um, next meeting as we continue, um, instead of in lieu of saying next week.
Okay.
Sure. Then I would, I would amend my motion to reflect that next meeting as June 25th.
Okay. And does it need to be reflected that it will be the 9:05 agenda item as well?
That was part of, I, that was part of my original motion that it would be agenda item number one.
Number one. Okay.
Continued items would have to be the first item, the first addressed in the next meeting.
Gotcha. Thank you, Nicole. Okay, so it's been amended. Bob, do you?
I seconded.
They'll second amendments, okay? Any more discussion? Okay, Kate?
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum?
Yes.
Could I also, Mr. Chair, ask that, uh?
No, no.
Could I ask that, uh, the, uh, motions be written out and forwarded to each of us so that, uh, we get the wording correctly when it's time to make the motions?
Um, sure. I, it was in our, in the staff report, I believe.
Uh, it's, it, it was talked about suggestions and this and that. What, uh?
Gotcha.
What Scott read was probably the motions, but it, it was different than what we had in our package, so.
Exactly.
I can make sure that everything is written out and I will email all of that out to you, all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was a, a long meeting.
Well, it's not nearly as long as some.
Wow. Okay, hopefully everyone will have the chance to continue reading and get filling the information out that they hope to get before our next meeting and we'll be able to move this along.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Um, oh, never mind.
Well, now, wait a second.
Now, at first I was going, I had gotten a note that, um, there's no motions because it's just a recommendation, but apparently it was clarified in the, in the conference room down there. So we're all good.
Okay.
You also have an untimed staff update, um, to ask about.
Okay, um, I'd like to thank the, everyone who participated from the developer side. Thank you very much for, for your patience with us and again, in the public as well. And hopefully we don't ever have another interruption like we did this morning. Um, okay, our untimed, untimed, uh, office news?
Well, we just, as you can imagine, we, uh, devoted a, a whole lot of time, uh, to getting prepared for today. Like to acknowledge Mark Roberts, uh, specifically, uh, has just done uh, an enormous amount of work and review, um, in addition to all of the other projects and, and, and being a mentor to all of our younger staff. He's, he's put in, uh, a significant amount of effort over the last couple of weeks and just really, uh, should be commended for that.
Yay, Mark.
It's been a team effort. It's been challenging. Uh, uh, looking forward to, uh, to next week and, and, uh, hopefully getting this wrapped up and uh, looking forward to the opportunity to address some of the questions and things that came up today and, and again, hopefully that, uh, I'll echo, hopefully our meeting goes, uh, without any other.
Non-mentionable.
So, and that's all I have. But thank you very much for, again, long meeting and thank you, thank you all.
And thank you for all the time getting put into this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
Okay, um, I did review the, uh, the Roberts Rules of Order that, uh, were sent out by, um, Nicole, I believe, sent those to us. So I'm supposed to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, but moving seconded. Um, Nicole, do we need to take a roll call vote on this one?
She's muted.
Still muted.
Without objection, you can do it.
Okay, there's no objection. We can, uh, okay, let's do that then.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jay.